Okay, webinar is now live and we are also live on Facebook as I mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you very much. Welcome everyone to the August 4th, 2021 meeting of the Quest School Committee. Would all members that are present please indicate so enroll call Mrs. Colery?
Present.
Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Present.
And I am present Craig McClellan, all members are present as of six o'clock PM. Our first agenda item is always public comment. I do want to mention though, as I always do at the outset of the meeting that this is being held remotely because of the extended COVID measures that have been put into place by Governor Baker and enabling public bodies such as this one to meet remotely. However, as of August 18th, the school committee will be meeting in person again. That is confirmed and we will be maintaining sort of a hybrid format in that, you know, we don't want to lose the remote participation. So we will be monitoring Q and A's from a platform like Zoom or maybe Zoom. That will depend, but we will be doing that to enable, as to enable everyone to still participate remotely. And to keep our numbers up because we, the in-person meetings we had that preceded or predated the pandemic, really there was very little participation and we don't want to lose that. It's important. But we will be back in person in the community room on August 18th. We will be trying to, we're looking forward to trying to move these meetings around a little bit in terms of location. Sometimes we might, you know, we need to get the capability to do it first, but we are working on doing that so that we can have it at like the Osgood School, the Deer Hill School, the middle school, the high school, the learning commons, different, different areas. So that's something that we're looking to implement this year. Dr. Sullivan actually came up with that idea along with Dr. Scollins, and I think it's wonderful and we're going to try and do that. So with that said, I will also note that there's been a lot of, a lot of messaging that has come both my way and other, I think, to the email inboxes of other school committee members, as well as district leadership surrounding the mask, masking requirements for the fall. This meeting is not base, or excuse me, that meeting is not intended, this meeting is not intended to discuss that topic. We're going to actually address that topic in a special school committee meeting. We'll just address that alone. We, that is a date to be determined. We'll have various representatives of various entities in the community, you know, pertinent and relevant members of the community like Board of Health, the Cohasse Teachers Association. Other, you know, those types of folks will be at the meeting. We want to make sure that the families have as much notice as possible about that. So everyone that wants to attend can attend. But it should be in the, in the near future. We're hoping next week we're going to do that. So we're not, I'm not going to entertain too much discussion about the masking requirement for the fall tonight. This meeting is about the Student Services Department and Sirwanka is here. We haven't quite gotten to it, but that is basically what this meeting is about is the Student Services offerings and department. And Mr. Wong has put together a presentation. And so that very important facet of our schools is what this meeting is designed to address primarily. There are other agenda items as well, but that is the, the primary reason for this meeting tonight. And we will set aside a whole meeting to talk about masking. So all of that said, I will open it up to public comment, which as I always note is reserved for discussion of items that are not on the agenda. If you have a point to be made relevant to some of the other agenda items, just wait until we arrive at that point in the meeting. But I will give everyone a opportunity to make public comment using the Q and A feature on Zoom. Let's give it a few seconds here so that people can type and send their questions if they have any or comments. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is always the superintendent's report. And at this time I would turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Well, thank you very much, Chairman McClellan. Summer days are fleeting fast, so make sure everyone out there enjoys the hopefully improving, improving weather as, as we go forward. We are joined today by Mrs. Laura Soderberg, who is a very involved parent and community member and has, and her daughter there, I think I see over there, it's kind of on the edge of screen, hello. And she is, has done some great work in promoting volleyball within our district. You know, right now we do not have, you know, volleyball as a, as a formal sport for, for our, for either girls or, or boys. And I also have with us Steve Rotandi, who of course is our athletic director. There's, there's Steve. So I'm going to actually, first of all, thank Laura for her fantastic work in fundraising and promoting for what I think is a great opportunity for the class of public schools. But I'd like to turn it over to Athletic Director Rotandi to, to formally introduce what this is all about. And of course, I'd invite Ms. Soderberg to, to, to give any comments in regards to this. So I will turn it over to Athletic Director Rotandi. Good to see you, Steve.
See you. Hi, everybody. Yeah, Dr. Sullivan basically just summed it up, but where I'm excited to be here tonight and with Laura and Taylor to talk about volleyball and bringing it to Cohasset High School. So, you know, in a meeting I had with Laura about last week, I said, it was, it was about my second week as interim Athletic Director Cohasset. And her and I sat down to have a conversation about, about volleyball and, and bringing the sport to Cohasset. You know, and I told her that in becoming the Athletic Director, one of my plans would be to always expand and bring new sports to Cohasset. And I, I would say that, that though that was a goal of mine, I really wouldn't be where I'm at in the process with it without her and the help of the rest of the community and the student athletes that have really rallied around this to make what volleyball would be, would be our 27th sport offered at Cohasset High School, which is really impressive for a school with 460 kids to offer that many sports. But they've, they've been working on really where we're at and starting a new program is, and it's, it's never really an easy obstacle, but it needs to be self-funded. So until we can put a little time and work it into becoming a reality in the school budget. So that's what Laura and her team were tasked with. And, and they've really done a lot of work, a lot of great work and really bringing the community together and our student athletes to, to help bring that in. So that's what we're here to talk about tonight. I'll let Laura kind of discuss some of the things that they've been doing. They did an amazing fundraiser in Boston that from everything I heard was serious manual labor. So it's, it hasn't, you know, it hasn't, you know, it hasn't been your typical fundraisers we've seen of like YouTube videos just asking for money, like they went in and did some serious manual labor. And it sounded like it was a great event and some volleyball going on this summer. So again, I let Laura speak to it, but where we're at, at this point is we've, funds have been raised and, and we're moving some things forward to make volleyball a reality as a, as a sport, starting at the JV, JV level and then transitioning to a varsity sport at Cohasset High School.
Yep, yep. So if I may, just a few remarks, thank you, Dr. Sullivan, and thank you, Steve. I'm proud and honored to present this gift to the school committee from the Cohasset High School Volleyball Boosters. Many thanks to Mr. Rotandi for his hard work and putting together very detailed budgets. So we knew where all of these funds were going in order to support this new program. And I also want to thank the superintendent and both the middle and high school principals as well, because they helped us really get the word out and gen up some energy from within the student body. So it's been a pretty exciting ride and with a rather steep incline. I have to say the $15,000 and trying to fundraise that seemed kind of daunting to me at first. We learned of that in about late March. But as Steve had indicated, we had one event alone that we were able to raise $10,000 all in one fell swoop. We, through a contact of mine, we were able to support the big Boston Volleyball Festival that happens in the Boston Convention down in Boston. So over 65 volunteers came between two days to both set up courts as well as tear down the courts. And with our amazing team that we pulled together, the program directors gave us a bit of an incentive to clean up two more courts and with that they gave us a full $10,000. So I was amazed and proud and honored to be working with all these hardworking folks. And I was so excited to tell Steve that late May that, all right, we're already, I think at that time we were about $12,000. So we were 80% down the path of having raised that $15,000, a place I didn't know that we would get to so soon. And in that excitement, I informed Steve and he said, this is great news. We should have a JV team this fall and I'll start circulating that with other schools in the league. So, so then the fun begins and special thanks to Steve and Tara Noise, Ms. Noise, that a intermural program for volleyball was actually conducted in March and April of this last year. Run on Wednesdays and, or Mondays and Wednesdays, I believe, for a good four weeks. That got some more energy and some more interest generated in the student body. And then just as of last week, we finished up an eight-session beach volleyball clinic. And mind you, learning a new sport in the outdoors makes it additionally challenging. You've got the sun and the heat and the wind playing games with the flight of the ball. But I have to say, this was run as a fundraising event, but also generated a lot of interest, both from the middle and the high school. We've had, like I said, over 34 girls. They made tremendous progress in not only building the skills, but also the IQ of, you know, the game and how to play the game of volleyball, which was super great. And despite all the challenges of being outdoors and in the sand, they all kept a really great attitude and kept coming back for more. So for me, that was, that was a really exciting time and encouraging that there is some, some interest in within our district to want to play this sport. And I think it's a great opportunity for our female athletes here. So I do know there's a couple of girls that don't play any other sports other than volleyball, which is great because we're bringing more into the athletic arena and others who would be during the fall time doing AAU sports outside of our school district. They too are choosing to forego the AAU program to do volleyball in the fall. So I think this is demonstrates some real interest from the girls in our community. And obviously the families and parents that supported these girls back and forth to the beach every week. It was just a really, a big success. So I'm excited to move forward. I'm excited to present this gift to you as a school committee and looking forward to really pushing forward on this and hitting the courts and having the girls hit the courts to play volleyball. So thank you for, thank you for that time.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you both. Before I turn it over to ask this committee for acceptance of the gift and then also a vote to continue to pursue volleyball as a, as a formal sport at Cohasset High School. I wondered if you had any questions or wanted to have any discussion, Chairman McClellan?
Of course, yeah. Any member of the school committee that have any questions related to the, these, this prospective volleyball program? Please certainly ask. I don't need to, I don't think calling anyone. You guys can just speak up if you would like to. Just sort of, or Mr.?
Yes. Something. First of all, hi, hi, guys. This is awesome. The volleyball is just another way to get girls to do sports and, and sports is so important, especially for girls. And Laura, what your team's been able to do and getting this together is, is amazing. And it just not only promotes well-being, but it, it promotes self-confidence. It's a positive body and girls can play sports. I just got some of these stats that I want to throw out there. And it's, 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 it's a good way for girls to, to team, play teamwork. And they learn so many different skills and life skills. And for this to be added, you know, as a parent, I thank you. And as a school, as school committee member, we thank you because this is, this is big and this has took a lot of work. And, and, and that's how things get started. It starts little and, and, and to be quite honest, I just want to share a couple of things. My girls were able to play in Hingham when we didn't have a league. And we had put in a half a team and we won both years. So I'm sure this team's not only going to be successful, winning. I, I think this is something that we're going to see for years and years and to come and to be part of this and thank, is, is great. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Next, Kearney, anyone else?
I'll just, I'll just echo on my appreciation, especially in this era of devices and screens and electronics, to have more opportunities for people to engage in physical activities and things that are ultimately healthy, things that build teamwork, companionship, build the social network of our, our schools. These are great. And the fact that this is done grassroots by, by parents, by volunteers, that you raise this money. It's, it's, it's really inspiring and I love the idea that our school for relatively small sizes, what was it, Steve? 27 different sports. That's a phenomenal, a phenomenal achievement for our, for our community and a great, great benefit for our kids. So thank you very much for all, for all the work. I look forward to voting to accept.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll just, I'd just like to thank you, Ms. Soderberg, for your work. I mean, it's not only on this, you're a very involved community member, especially when it comes to the schools and always have been, even in those in-person meetings I spoke about where no one was really there. You were oftentimes there and, and it's so important. And it really, it shows how dedicated you are to not only your own child education, but the school district as a whole. And I think that should be recognized. This is just one, you know, physical example or manifestation of that. So thank you. All right. And so we, Dr. Sullivan, you were asking for a vote to accept the gift. Is that correct?
That is correct. The gift is $14,822. So it's a wonderful donation. It represents a lot of great work. So yes, I would ask you to take a vote to accept this gift to form a volleyball team.
Okay, everyone, is there a motion to accept the $14,822 gift for the Cohasset volleyball program?
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Kearney. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Saint Ange, all in favor? Mrs. Colery? Was that an eye, Mrs. Colery? I think it was.
It was. It was an enthusiastic eye. Thank you very much, Laura. Good to see you. Thank you.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Mr. Kearney?
Aye.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. That motion passes unanimously and the gift is accepted very, very gratefully. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank Mrs. Soderberg and Taylor. Thank you for being here. And of course Athletic Director Rotandi, this is fabulous, couldn't, couldn't be happier and more thankful for this. So thank you and have, have a wonderful rest of your summer.
Oh, wait a minute. There was a comment coming in from the community that is relevant to this topic. And this is just a comment, not a question. Thanks to Laura for her tireless efforts to bring volleyball to Cohasset Public Schools. Fantastic coach and fabulous person. And thanks for representing Taylor. My daughters can't wait to participate. Thank you, Mr. Rotandi, Dr. Sullivan and entire committee for supporting, approving the volleyball program. That comment was made by Diane Lawson, who did not state their address, but I'm sure she will follow up with that so that we can make the record clear. Thank you so much for that pleasant comment, Mrs. Lawson. That's it. So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Have a wonderful night. Taylor, Mrs. Soderberg and Mr. Rotandi. Bye-bye.
Very good. Thank you. Bye-bye.
And Mrs. Lawson's address is 433 King Street in Cohasset for the minutes. Okay, Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude your report or is there more items?
No, I, I have actually one more item. So this, this item's always an exciting item for me to update on. This is our hiring update as of August 4th. I should mention that at next meeting, we did meet and this will come up, I'm sure later, but we did meet as a finance and facilities committee and we discussed our SR3 plans, which we also discussed as a leadership team. We, that will be presented next meeting. So we'll be able to present what we're hoping to do with our SR plans, our SR funds, which also include a few positions in basically elementary literacy and numeracy, some custodian, custodians and also a counselor or a social worker, I should say, at the middle and the high school. So we'll talk about that in more specifics. But these are our hires that we've been lucky to acquire over the past few months. We're very excited about them. One of the bright notes last year was our new hires. And Dr. Scollins works very closely with these new hires to get them acquainted in our new teacher induction program. One of the wonderful features of Cohasset Public Schools is that we assign a mentor slash, slash, coach to any person who is a new staff member, not just a new teacher. So many of these teachers have been here for, you know, several years in, in different districts. But they get someone who, whom they can collaborate with, whom they can collaborate, share ideas. And she works with these teachers monthly, Dr. Scollins does, to make sure that they have a proper induction to everything that we do here in Cohasset. So just to kind of go over the hires so you can be aware of them. We hired a math teacher. Some of these are replacements of, there isn't a lot of turnover in Cohasset. People like to work here and they tend to stay and, and we're very proud of that. We did have a little bit, a few open positions, some coming from retirement, a couple coming from relocations, families relocating and, and a lot of them coming from positions that we, you advocated for as a school committee and the town supported us in. So the first one is a math teacher at the high school and we hired Allison Daly. You'll see we hired, we were able to hire an ESP at Deer Hill. Brendan Nie, a first grade teacher, which we were thankful, we added this because of an enrollment increase. Kaitlyn Caraba, who is a wonderful teacher. She worked with a, at Deer Hill the past year as a teacher. And then we have, you'll see Caitlin Amaral, who's an ELA teacher, grade six. We added Ms. Devon Gerard, who was a kindergarten teacher, replacing someone who had retired, a long, long time teacher there. Emily Omar, as a reading specialist at the middle school. That's near and dear to my heart as we've been advocating for that position for, for some time. Thank you, school committee, for your great work. And Ellen Mar, if you're out there, thank you. Jenna Gibbons, an ELA teacher at the middle school, we were able to, to hire. Jesse Slade, a science teacher at the high school. Kaylee Schneider, a grade five teacher. We were able to, to put on staff at Deer Hill. Kaitlyn Hilson as an ESP. Cara DeSalvo, a grade three teacher. Lindsay Kay, an instructional technology teacher. And this really completes that triangle that we were trying to create with the hiring of Lisa Raden. And now we have Lisa Raden overseeing and working with Lindsay, I'm sure, I'm sorry, I should say with, yeah, with Lindsay and with escaping me, Cassie O'Brien, of course, at the elementary school, wonderful technology specialist. So we really have that. We have, it really buttressed at both ends here to, to help our middle and high school and our elementary school with technology instruction. Megan Burke Meyer, we were able to bring on and hire as an ESP. She, she has, she was formerly at Deer Hill and Osgood over the summer too. Michelle Curtin, moving positions from our Stars Program to be a kindergarten teacher. We're really excited to have Michelle in that position. Nicholas Sullivan is our new middle school special education teacher that we advocated for this position with school committee. And we're very excited to have Nicholas on board. Sarah Anthony is an art teacher who we had hired due to a retirement that happened mid, mid-year. And we're excited to keep her moving with our high school program. Sarah Kane is a music teacher, a point six position. At, it's actually at, at Osgood. And then Tia Pisano is an ESP that we brought on for Deer Hill. And you can see we still have some work to do, hiring a few positions. And I am excited to talk a little more to you about our SR plans at our next meeting. But I wanted to make sure that you were updated and had a good sense on where we were. I feel really good about where we are right now and I would anticipate that all of these positions, some of which just became openings, we will have filled within the next couple of weeks. So I don't know if the committee has any questions on this or if you wanted any further discussion. Laura, you, you, you actually don't have to stay for this part. I can exit you out if you'd like me to.
I've exited out of the main and I've come back in just as a participant, just as a viewer.
Okay, so I will put you, I don't know if I can put you to, I think because you're in as a panelist, that they're going to see you as a panelist, but you can, if you want to come back in and just join the, the meeting via the link, that's probably the best move.
And that's what I thought I did, but I will try.
I mean, I don't have a problem with you here, but it's just probably you don't want to be on camera.
Just, just use the link that, that you would use normally instead of the one that was sent to you. Use the one from the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Laura. All right. So, so that's our hiring update. And I don't know if you had any questions or comments on that, Chairman McClellan?
Mrs. Clear, do you have any questions?
I don't. Thank you, Superintendent Sullivan. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Mr. Dial, do you have any questions?
Very, very quick. One, it looks like it's on the order of about 20, 20 names that I'm seeing and with, with another half dozen or so openings. Is that a normal sort of hiring pace? And then, you know, bringing on that number of people is difficult, I guess. What's your thoughts on onboarding new people into the, into the Cohasset schools? Bringing them up to speed about all the policies and keeping the culture of the, of the schools at a high level?
Yeah, both, both great questions. We had a few more openings this year than we've had in the past just because, like I said, of a few relocations, a couple of retirements. We also advocated for all of the new positions, which are, are referenced here. So this is a little higher than, than usual, but I, I wouldn't say it's, it's too atypical. Dr. Scollins or Barbara, I don't know if you have any comments on, on sort of our, our process here of hiring? And I'm going to let Dr. Scollins talk a little bit about the way we onboard folks. I'm very proud of, I, I mentioned our induction program, but maybe you can talk a little more specifically about what that really is, Dr. Scollins. But maybe first just from Barbara and Leslie about our, our hiring process here. And some of them are ESPs that I have opened up, but go ahead and certainly comment. I'll go to Barbara first if you have any thoughts.
Sure. So, you know, absolutely. We, we were very excited to be able to add some teachers. You know, we, we welcome or always teachers really kind of pursuing what they want. So when a teacher wants to make a shift to another position and that opens up something else, you know, we, we fully support them being able to do that and encourage that growth mindset and continuing to challenge themselves. And then, you know, when we fill those positions, we really do, even in the summer, a very thorough kind of interview and vetting process of all of the candidates. And I have to say, it's, it's very exciting. I think we are, you know, and with, with a full year now under my belt, I kind of can say, you know, you know, I, I really understand Cohasset. I understand, you know, what it means to be a member of a team here and what we are looking to build here and kind of the, the community feeling here. And, you know, really adhering to those standards in getting people here onboard. But also it's very exciting to be able, and I'm thinking of, you know, the ESPs that I interviewed and hired this summer. You know, fresh kids out of college, very excited about everything that they've learned about education, really wanting to try things and to start in this way to have people mentor them so they can really get to be who they want to be. Perhaps someday as teachers, you know, some people obviously come on board as ESPs and want to stay in that role. And they bring just great skills and enthusiasm and, and all kinds of newness to us. So there's a lot of good going on with the new hires.
Yeah, and if I could just add, and I'll let Dr. Scollins aside in for a minute. But what I'm also really proud of is a lot of these names we had brought on during COVID for, for various reasons as ESPs or long-term subs. And they were such quality. They, we have a very collaborative hiring process. And there was some real competition out there and a lot of them rose right to the top. For instance, Caitlyn Caraba, Caitlin Amaral, who was in a different position. It was more of a halftime position or, 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 although it wasn't a full-time position. She was able to apply for and be, and be the person that we chose in our open ELA grade six position. And then we have, just looking down the line here, Kaylee Schneider, Caitlyn Hilson, Cara DeSalvo, Megan Burke Meyer, Michelle Curtin even. Michelle Curtin even because she moved over. But these, all of these teachers are known to us. They were just in different positions. And when these, when these spots opened up, whether it be a new position to the district that we advocated for, a retirement, a long term sub from for maternity or other leave, you can see that in there. We didn't have to go far to find that quality because we already had them working with us. So I'm very excited about that. So Dr. Scollins, any comment on our hiring process and also on any to address Mr. Dial's second part of his question about our induction program, feel free to speak about what happens during those that time.
Or I, just to jump on, I know that Barbara talked a little bit that we have a very consistent process for hiring, and I think that's really important, that we all follow that process and it's a very thorough process. But the induction piece is so very important. One of the things about Cohasset is we don't have a lot of turnover. However, teachers normally, three to five years, they will leave the industry in their first three to five years if they are not onboarded properly. And if they don't feel like they belong and that they are supported within a district. So and that's kind of a countrywide standard that that's out there. But for us, it's one of my favorite parts of my job. So in August and early September, they'll spend three days with me and I bring in Barbara and I have Lisa Raden, Lisa Gins Carl to to talk and work with some this with those new teachers. And they're actually not all new, as Dr. Sullivan mentioned. Some of these are very established teachers. It's just that in in Cohasset, we give mentors to all. And I think that's very important because they, to your point, they have to learn the culture. They have to learn all the policy. They need to learn what happens here and how do we do things. So we do that. For the first three days, we have our new teacher program and then they meet with me monthly, sometimes with their mentors, just sometimes with me. And we have particular topics that we go over, but we also have time for them to kind of work things out. And one of the nice things that happens at the table is because we have such a diverse group of individuals with varying experiences, they all share. And so it's very helpful, right? Because we have our brand new teachers coming right out of school and we have some veteran teachers who also bring things to the table. So I totally enjoy it. I stay in contact with them after their first year. And just because I want to keep, you know, tabs on them and and just make sure that they still feel like they are included. And so, like I said in the beginning, it's definitely one of my favorite, favorite things to do. I love, I love that part of what I do.
It becomes a very strong professional learning community and the feedback has been really powerful that we are doing. I think a good job with that and a lot, a lot of that goes to Dr. Scollins, the principals, and really the staff who, you know, it takes a village just to bring anybody who's new new onboard successfully to make them feel welcomed and to make sure that they hit the ground running with everything we do from an initiative and real core value standpoint. So.
Absolutely. And the mentors are amazing. The amount of work they, you know, the requirement is fifteen hours over the course of the year. It's quadrupled without a doubt. There's a lot, they spend lots and lots of time with their with their mentees. So, strong program.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. That sounds like a very strong program and, you know, we we talk a lot about, you know, emphasizing our student development, but teacher development, teacher incorporations is 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 important as well to a to a to a successful school system. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Anything else, Mr. Kearney?
Yes, absolutely. First, I think it's great that we have such a low turnover. I think that speaks a lot about the community and the leadership and I think that's awesome. The the other thing is, I know that we were able to fill the lot of positions such as an English specialist at the middle school. But we still have some other wish lists, being a math specialist, computer science teacher, guidance counselor. So can you speak to what we don't have that we're still looking for, sort of like the wishlist? Yes, and I should say, we were able to bring on, as you mentioned, the reading specialist. We did hire the beginnings of our computer science offerings and increased offerings by bringing on Lindsay Kay, who is going to also teach classes at the middle school. But to your point, Mr. Kearney, that is exactly one of the positions that we need to fill and we really, as you saw from our strategic plan, we really want to pursue a solid articulated computer science program in our in our public schools, which, you know, we we have the makings of it and the beginnings of it. And, you know, we do attack the the standards in different ways, but we absolutely need more of an articulated vision moving vertically throughout our district. We did a really nice job of providing supportive positions over the last couple of years that we saw, we did see a shortage of in our district and statistically, we we found we we needed for a lot of, for a lot of reasons, even pre-COVID. But we are looking to bring on a council, a, I should say, a social worker position at our middle and high school, which is a position that's been out there that would not only work in our bright program, and for those of you who are listening in who may not know about that, that's our Bridge to Resiliency and Youth Transitioning. It rolls right off the tongue. I know I'm saying that facetiously, but it is a great program that helps kids who might have, might miss, be missing school for a variety of reasons. It helps them transition slowly back at an appropriate pace. And that program in itself is is supposed to have, by the nature of it, a a social worker in it. So that's something we're looking, looking to fill. Other other positions that we did sit down and with the with the leadership team, I don't have it in front of me right now, but we sat down this summer already and kind of did that work where we looked at a wishlist, looking out three years. A math specialist was something that that popped up at our middle school level to sort of be a bookend to this reading specialist that we have. Where, you know, increasing our ability to to support our our students in math at our elementary level was important to us as well. And some, I don't know what other positions that you can think of that, there, there's a whole list of them. I'm sorry, I have right in front of me.
I know, I I think, I think you articulated that pretty well. I I what stood stood out to me the most is the math specialist at the middle school, too. I think that, like you said, I I, you know, I I that's so important at that level. Math in in middle, math in every level. It's just that 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 middle school level of math would be one of the wish lists that that I would see is really, I mean, look, we need a lot of things, but that's something I think that should be a priority. Just throwing it out there.
Absolutely. And as we, as we move through the budget process, not only will we continue to look at building capacity as a leadership team, but we'll obviously share and get input, share with and get input, not only from the facilities and finance committee, but from the 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 whole committee as a whole. So that's there, there, it's exciting times as we build and and we also want to make sure that everyone, everything that we advocate for has a direct connection to our strategic plan. That's very important. So, the great question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thank you. Those, thanks, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. Orange?
Yes, thank you. When I got this list in the mail, I put a little star by the fifth grade teacher because I'm wondering, I believe it was last year's fourth grade class that an extra teacher was added when we went back to full in person. Is this fifth grade teacher keeping that with the same number of classrooms? Is or is it? How is that being organized this year?
No, this is actually a long term sub for a leave. We did not add a another teacher because our numbers were still within the contractual limits. We did add a teacher to first grade, however.
Okay.
Numbers rose. Now, that doesn't mean that we may not have to or or want to consider that. That would be something that discussions, you know, could come up as we think about distancing and our need to distance. If we do want to stay at three feet distance in our fifth grade next year, then we would need to add an additional fifth grade teacher. You know, at the time when we were looking at those positions, that wasn't something that was a need. So that may be something that we're considering very quickly and looking at the the means we have to potentially post that position. So that's also a very insightful and appropriate question.
Can you remind me what the numbers are? Is it different for grade of just like contractually when we split off to add another class?
Yeah. At the elementary level, I know at the, it's twenty.
I think it's twenty six at the, at the, in the fifth grade.
It is at twenty six to fifth grade and at the, as you get, as you get to the lower grades to Ausgood, the number becomes, I think it's twenty two or twenty three. And then at kindergarten, I know that we made a commitment to keep those at, I believe, twenty.
Twenty one, yeah.
Yeah, I can, I can actually find that for you.
Yeah.
I can't, but.
I mean, I can look it up, too. I just couldn't remember.
There, there are actual, there are best practice numbers in contract, but that's really what we're talking about. Then they may not be set to be requirements, but they're, they're, they're what we all try to and we've, we've contractually agreed that we'll try to meet meet certain numbers and that's.
Okay, all right. Twenty six just seems huge to me. Okay, that's good.
Yeah, but I don't, I I believe where I I have to look at the numbers, but we're not that high.
More about the spacing, right? Dr. Sullivan, it's not the numbers as much as the spacing.
Correct. It's the spacing. Remember, in order to, we we're looking at twenty one kids in a classroom in order to space them out in what we have at the at three feet. That's the problem. That's why we added the extra teacher last year to fourth grade. It was to make sure that we were at that three foot space.
Yes.
The numbers will be fine. You know, I obviously want to try to keep them low, but we won't be able to meet that, that twenty one number. Two, I think, was the max. We could, we could fit in some of the rooms because they're not all the same space.
Gotcha.
We would have to add a teacher to fifth grade to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Yeah, and just to be clear, our our classes will not be at twenty six in fifth grade. They'll be lower than that. That's just the maximum we we are allowed to consider and, yeah, and they'd be even lower if we add another teacher, of course.
Right. Awesome. Yes, thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
That's all.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Dr. Sullivan, thank you very much for the hiring update. Is there anything else in the superintendent's report?
There is not.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to the real meat of the meeting here, which is our Student Services update presentation. And I know Mrs. Serwanka, our Director of Student Services, has put a lot of thought and effort into this and has worked with the leadership team in order to present a sort of comprehensive landscape of our our overview of our Student Services Department. I think this should be helpful. We haven't done something like this before. So we're hoping this will facilitate or encourage rather a a full discussion on this topic. And as we know, Mrs. Serwanka is present every month to provide updates relative to Student Services as the district continues to place a heavy emphasis on that facet of our operation. So with no further ado, I would turn the meeting over at this time to our Director of Student Services, Barbara Serwanka. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I can't tell you what a pleasure it is to be here and to to really have both, you know, the the interest and the enthusiasm to, you know, really advocate for a meeting of this nature. So it's, it's very exciting for me and I'm very happy to do this. I would like to talk a bit about the Office of Student Services and then we'll talk a bit about, you know, where we saw ourselves this year and where we are going for the future. But, you know, before all of that, for everyone who's listening, I'm sure you know that, you know, I have hit the mark where I have been in Cohasset for a year now and it's a wonderful place to be in Cohasset, to work with just the tremendous teachers, building administration, district administration, all of the staff, the therapists, the the support staff. It's just wonderful. But to work with the families and the parents and the school committee and really kind of, you know, engage in the community. It's just been a great, great year getting to know everything, getting to know everyone and all of that. You know, I have spent the the month since June through now going to the farmer's markets on Thursday afternoons and just seeing people there and really embedding myself and getting to know Cohasset even more. And it's just a great, great place with just so much to offer that it is truly a privilege to be here. And it's very exciting to be able to talk to all of you about all of this with kind of a year behind me now and and knowing the community and all of you a little bit better and being able to talk to you about, you know, who Student Services is and where we're going and what we're doing. And and so I'm, I'm excited to do this. Dr. Sullivan, it, I I certainly can share, or if you have the ability to share my presentation, that would be great, too.
Which would be better? You you do have the ability to share. I mean, you're co-host, but I'd be glad to share it for you.
That might be helpful. So I can just kind of talk my way through it as we go, if you don't mind.
And I have the PDF, but it's right here.
Great.
Will the PDF work? Okay?
I don't think so, actually. Well, yes, yes, it will. Yes. Yeah, that will be fine. Thank you. Yep. So, yes. So a little bit of what I wanted to open with was I wanted to talk about the Office of Student Services. And that is because while certainly it's not a brand new thing for the office to be the Office of Student Services as opposed to the Office of Special Education is relatively new and a little bit different. So certainly in Student Services, what falls under that and kind of takes the lion's share of the focus, if you will, are Special Education Services, those those students who are on IEPs. But it is not only Special Education Services and those students that the the office oversees. We also oversee the 504s in the district, even though that is mostly building based and you will be doing most of your work with the teachers and the principals at the building level. It is overseen by the Office of Student Services and I work very closely with all of the principals. It's very important to me that my office be a very open office and a very collaborative office. I was telling someone, I was looking back over some of my communications over the past year and just found an astounding number of phone calls and meetings with parents that were not necessarily within, you know, the auspices of a particular building or a particular team meeting or something like that. But but above and beyond kind of that kind of a meeting. My work with the principals is very direct and and daily and and even across last year, often in person. So even though 504s and some of these other items refer to them as being building based, they do fall under my office, but very much with my involvement and awareness. The other thing that falls under Student Services is something that is very near and dear to both Leslie Scollins and myself, and that is MTSS, which is our tiered support model at different levels. It might be called different things. The elementaries tend to call it child study. The middle and high school tend to call it ISST and TST. It, too, is building based, but with a lot of involvement and oversight from my office. And, you know, it it truly takes everyone to really circle around, support and educate children. And that's what MTSS really is about. There are, there is wonderful work going on at every single school in this support to kind of team approach to students. Those teams meet weekly. What Dr. Scollins and I really are looking at, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, is a little bit more consistency, school to school, and a little bit more vertical alignment between schools as this is going on. And the principals have, you know, partnered with us in this and are, you know, very excited and thrilled to work on this. And this can do nothing but, you know, continue all of the good work that's already going on for our children. I also oversee all of the out of district programs. So if we have students in in our, in our schools who, for whatever reason, you know, just are not able to really get what they need and their family, a program, myself, we will partner and we will work together. Students might go to a collaborative, a private special education placement, something along those kinds of lines outside of our community schools. But I do oversee all of those out of district placements as well. And what I really like to say about those is that And what I really like to say about those is that the students always are and continue to be, no matter where they are going to school, Cohasset students first and foremost. And we always want to continue that connection, whether it simply be through my participation in their meetings or any involvement that they might have within the activities or the goal, as it always is, to be able to return to our district schools when they are able. I oversee the home and hospital tutoring for the district, whether a student is on any of the the plans that we've already talked about, whether it be an IEP or a five oh four or not. If a student is out for a significant portion of time and needs some tutoring services, I work with the principals and the pediatricians, and that comes to our office to provide that tutoring. English language learners, while it is, again, very building based, it does fall under my office. And we, you know, we we do some really nice work and we are very fortunate to have a wonderful teacher for this who with whom I meet monthly and take care of all of the learning that needs to go on, both the academic learning and the social emotional learning, and also all of the state reporting that we may need to do and testing. And then finally, civil rights falls under student services. And there have been, you know, some some things that we've needed to take care of that falls under this category that I work very closely with building and district administrators on. And and that, too, falls under the Office of Student Services. So when I say everything really is a student service, it really is. We could go on to the next slide. So, as I said, the big concept really is that no matter what, the Office of Student Services focuses on making learning accessible for all students. And we take all aspects of the student into account when we are talking about that. We're concerned about, obviously, their academic achievement, but also their social emotional learning. And particularly at no, you know, greater time, I think, during the challenges of COVID nineteen. And as we move forward from that and as we move forward in our new strategic plan, which I'm very excited to talk about, and as we continue to progress as a district. So the next slide. So if we could stop and talk a little bit about special education for a couple of minutes. You know, that is really a lot of the work that I do and that I represent in the Office of Student Services. And what special education really means is that a student is identified through the initial evaluation process through a lot of ways, through formal testing, through observation, through record reviews, through work samples, through all of the child study, ISST, TST work that might have been done with that student because that pre-referral part is a very, very important part to any initial referral so that we fully understand the whole child. But when we are going through that, if a child ultimately, at the end of formal evaluation and all of those other pieces, is identified as having a disability and it has to meet the criteria and be a documented disability and, as a result, is not making effective progress, that is when special education kind of steps in, if you will. Both of those criteria have to be met because specialized instruction and/or related services have to be needed in order for that student to access the curriculum and to make progress. And every child is looked at as an individual, both for needs and for progress when we are talking about, well, education for all children, but particularly when we are talking about special education and individualized education programs. But if we if we move back a little bit from this, it it is almost a little bit like a funnel when you look at it. Because before we get to that special education part, usually what happens is there is some kind of awareness, whether it be on the part of a teacher, a parent, anyone who has a vested interest in the child, of some kind of the possibility of a concern. There's a lot of work that may go in at this point in time. There's a lot of differentiation in tiered supports that a teacher will do at just a very basic level one to to meet the needs of that child and and see what is really going on and tease this out a little bit. But as this moves on, if there is a discovery of an ongoing need, then the child would start to move through that MTTS system and to perhaps go through some tiered interventions, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And different strategies may be tried to really get to know what the reason is behind some of this and some things that might work to better help a child make the kind of progress that we want them to make. And if that kind of progress is not happening, we may look at an evaluation for an area of disability. At that point in time, we may start to be concerned about the idea that truly a disability may exist. Through all of this, there is collaboration with the team for the next steps. There's ongoing conversation and transparency around this and really everyone pulling together and working in the best interest of the child. Whatever the result of all of this may be, there is some kind of product that is going to address the need of the child, whether the tiered one, very basic supports, kind of helped the child and we recognized what they need and that's going to continue to be implemented, or if we needed to continue to work through different tiers and see what else is required, whatever comes out of this is going to be something that helps the child. And then even afterwards, it's like with our children in education, you know, our work is never done. We are going to continue this ongoing measurement and making sure that progress is being made in whatever it may be, whether it is, you know, through strict general education, through tiered supports, through five oh four, through IEP. This is kind of the way we do business. So I did want to, because I referred to some of these, talk a little bit about these different areas. So if if you were to picture a general education classroom, you would see that there are learning differences that exist across that classroom and different levels of learning that exist across that classroom. And that that is very typical, that that simply is the general education classroom. But as such, our teachers are very well trained in being able to differentiate their instruction so that students are taught based on their interests, based on their strengths, based on their needs, even though everyone is working toward the same end goal. All of those things are taken into account. And that is the teaching style, the universal design, the differentiated instruction that our teachers in Cohasset use every day with all of their students. They are able to do it in a variety of ways, through, you know, small group instruction, through, you know, different groupings of students and just different ways to evaluate students, kind of shifting and reshifting their groupings as they go, sometimes whole class instruction. But always with the district curriculum accommodation plan that all teachers can use and follow and refer to for accommodations that can and should be used with all students and all of the good teaching practices that they use within their general classroom. There's also this idea of tiered supports that as as teachers are teaching, as they always do in the way I just explained, if there are students that come to a level of interest, perhaps attention, concern for teachers, that they then can come to the tiered support team in their school and get different ideas about strategies, things that might work with the children, look back on the last year and what worked with the child and what didn't, look at what's going on this year, hear from other staff members to in terms of ideas to move forward with children and to test out some of those strategies that may work. This is a very, it's a very well-oiled machine of a system, if you will, in the sense that there are tier one supports that happen and they happen in all of the classrooms. You could see there, they meet eighty five to ninety percent of the children. They're very classroom-based. That is really where a lot of the success comes in, is when you tease out some of those supports and children can benefit from them. And within these tiered support teams, you take some of those ideas back to the classroom and implement them, watch their efficacy for a couple of weeks, report back to your tiered support team on the success that is happening. Or if not, do you need to move on to tier two? Get some ideas for some maybe deeper strategies. Maybe for ten to fifteen percent of the students, this would happen. Things might happen in kind of some more smaller group kind of instruction, some more focused strategies, some more outcome-based strategies and maybe different expectation ideas. And again, within a couple of weeks, coming back to that team, seeing how things are going. And if we continue moving up that continuum to tier three, you can see that we're looking at a very small number of children who really do need this type of tiered support, that it tends to be much more individualized. Oftentimes, this is where perhaps a referral to special education may take place. And then, again, as I defined special education before, really individually designed instruction to meet the needs of a child who has been identified as having a disability and not making effective progress. And that specialized instruction is specifically designed to enable the student to access the curriculum in a way that they can. So just a little overview of all of the different ways that we support kids. If we were to look a little bit back at last year for all of our students, the idea of the idea of COVID and thank you, Dr. Sullivan, the idea of COVID, the idea of, you know, really educating and meeting the needs of all of our students during COVID was a very scary thought, but really particularly so, very much so for all of the special educators when you thought of the students who were on an IEP during COVID and all of those specialized instructional strategies that were used for them and how that was going to be provided during COVID, it was a very scary thought. So what I designed for you was a little timeline to kind of take us through some of the things that we did. But with a lens toward where we are going, and that's kind of the important part of this, is that we're always looking forward, we're always moving forward. There are certainly some things that, you know, that we probably learned that we would love to go forward with and take with us. And there are things that that we really did do that, you know, kind of deserve a little bit of attention. So when we started a year ago in August and we realized that we needed to do our extended school year programming remotely, you know, our therapists really did some training around telehealth and being able to deliver some of those services. The staff partnered very closely with the families to promote engagement, even though it was remote. We recognized the challenges of that. You know, a lot of very hard work was done around that and and we were able to run our ESY program remotely. And then when we, you know, returned in the fall and we returned in our hybrid model, some of the things that we did, you know, preschool came back live. Some of the IEP students in programs came back for in-person instruction if they met some of the criteria that Desi had given us guidance on. We created individualized service and learning plans for every single student who was on an IEP. We really prioritized as many live therapies as we could. We very much focused on the testing from the spring COVID shutdown and that brought us up to date with current functioning data as well as evaluations that we needed to do. We gathered data around reading, writing and math using a variety of tools so we could compare the progress reports from June to the current skills and look at possible regression and need for services. We tried to build in additional in-person time for students who also were not necessarily on IEPs but were identified as needing services. We started to use our remote Wednesdays to really catch up on in-person evaluations because we really felt that was the way to deliver an evaluation, to provide some direct services and some compensatory services. We started adding walk-in therapies, some additional in-person time as needed for IEP students who were not originally identified in programs, but who needed those ongoing services. We really dealt into the COVID compensatory services discussions. We redeveloped schedules as we started to come back and changed all of our service and learning plans for in-person instruction. We really paid very close attention to the social emotional supports that were needed to ensure that the students were supported through the changes of, you know, being remote, being hybrid, being live and to increase the supports for students who needed those transition assistance. Put together some groups, especially for the tier two students at the high school who were struggling with executive functioning and needed to come in for that in-person support to really be able to be successful in their classes. And then at the end of the year, started putting in place some more robust transition meetings, checking on services and ensuring supports for the upcoming school year. And then really the strategic planning, you know, driving all of our instruction and plans moving forward in terms of our social emotional learning, in terms of increasing therapeutic support, in terms of our co-teaching focus as we move forward. So if we were to do a little bit of an analysis, if you will, as far as the district goes, kind of looking back on it, some of our strengths, really being able, not just in special education, but across the board in general as a general education as well, being able to use evaluations to drive service, to provide those services and to communicate with families. Where do we want to go from here? We want to continue that communication and those partnerships. We want to continue to build transparency and understanding with families. If you look at the opportunities that lie ahead of us, to continue that MTSS development and our tiered support systems, literacy through all for all, through our literacy initiative and our development in that area. And as Dr. Sullivan mentioned earlier this evening, increasing those therapeutic supports, partnering with the community, partnering with Bright and really building in, not just through a social worker, but through a lot of ways to build in those therapeutic supports for students. And if we were to look at our, you know, where we're going next in our strategic plan, my real focus targets the horizontal and vertical alignment of the MTSS model to really meet the needs of all students and to do it consistently from grade to grade, from building to building, to follow that pattern, to do it with transparency and communication with families and to do it within a set timeframe. And then to engage with the community around resources to support total student wellness. With when Dr. Sullivan referred to Bright before, we've had this this ongoing relationship and contract with Bright for, you know, a meeting a year and we have some implementation of it at the secondary level. But I've expanded that this summer to partner with them. I have a meeting tomorrow with the principals at the middle school and high school around this and then later this month with Bright and all of the people who are involved in it so that we can have six meetings a year and that, you know, we can add in the support of a social worker and really develop that programming, not solely in that particular program, but across the middle school and high school for students, just as an example of one of the things. So our roadmap to use MTSS process to better meet the needs, both the academic and the social emotional needs of students. One of the things, if you look at number two, that we're working on in my office this summer is a student services process guide, that we update that with district processes and documents to really kind of guide the work that we do for all students and that that is a living document, not just for special education, but for general education as well. And and what I I my vision of it is, is to make it a Google document. And and what I, my vision of it is, is to make it a Google document and accessible to all of the administration as well as the staff who really could, you know, benefit from all of those updated forms, processes, guidance, ideas in our work with children. To engage with the community and community resources to support overall student wellness and to deepen our support network. We, we had a meeting this month with Safe Harbors. As I said, I have a meeting coming up with Bright. If you look, the new castle logo, if you will, kind of has expanded the outside of their ring to really involve the family and the community as well as with the school. And that is the way that we do our work and that is part of our strategic plan. And it's so nice to see it emphasized there and just really kind of validate the way we believe things about kids and the way we are going to be moving forward with it. The, the Office of Student Services constantly engages in a six-year cycle of monitoring with the state. So to continue to work with the tiered focus monitoring process to engage in meaningful self-assessment of programs. And we're talking about all programs there, the co-teaching programs, the, the learning programs that we have in all of the schools, the the reading programs that we are developing and that we have at the middle school level. And to constantly improve what it is that we are offering students. To increase district communications with the community via the Office of Student Services webpage, which I continued to try to update last year, but to really be very planned and proactive in my contributions to the Navigator, to CPAC, we've, we've really kind of come together in with a vision of a non-COVID CPAC year and really worked together on that. And with my contributions to the school committee, very targeted, both in CPAC and the school committee, inviting team chairs, school psychologists to come and share and explain the work that they do for our students and how we work together. And then finally, to engage with the task force groups on the district initiatives, on literacy, on wellness, on professional development, so that we can move forward together. And, and I really am a very communicative and collaborative kind of person. That is what my office is about and that is what I am about. And it's just so wonderful to be in a community that really values that and that that is their mission and goal as well, to be able to do all of this together, because that is how we do our best work. So there I am and there is my contact information for you. But I would be remiss if I did not, in my next slide, give a shout out to all of the people who educate our children and who are contacts for you. The teachers, the therapists and the service providers that you deal with every single day. But also Kathy Breen, our elementary team chair, Michael Stapleton, our secondary team chair. And, and then I cannot use these slides without giving special thanks to Slides Carnival, who enables me to put together such a spiffy presentation. So thank you and thank you, Dr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mrs. Sirwanke. So I'm, I'm sure there'll be some, I don't know, Dr. Scollins, Dr. Sullivan, do you have anything to add to the presentation itself at this point, before I open it up to the community?
No, I think we just could not be happier to have Barbara on board. And her leadership from the get-go was amazing, incredibly collaborative. Learning about the community, getting involved with the community and just very excited for the, where we're going to go with this and how this will tie into our strategic plan. So couldn't be happier and I, I love that she, she really stressed that we're going to grow as a community and get voice, get community voice to make sure that we are providing everything we can for all of our students that, you know, that Barbara is helping to lead the support of. So that's all I wanted to say. And I don't know, Dr. Scollins. And I'm really very proud of the collaboration between Dr. Scollins and Barbara, just because they're both here and their, their work they do together, leading our MTSS, which is something that is going to really tie into our strategic plan. So very, very excited about that.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Just really, just to reemphasize, you know, that partnership between general education and, and special education, student services. The fact that, that really Barbara talked about student services and, and what falls under that. And so the relationship that Barbara and I have forged this year has been wonderful. Despite the fact that we were living in COVID, it actually threw us together really hard. So it really forced us to really be able to quickly get down to business, right? There was no time to fool around. And so I think that's been really helpful. But I really look forward to that, that continuation of that collaboration and, you know, looking at what is best for our students. And so we both, all of us are coming from that lens, our teachers and our administrators. But yeah, we'll work hand in hand. And as Barbara said, MTSS, which was RTI, you may have heard of that, is very, very much a product that I really believe in. And so does Barbara. So I think it will be fun to really work on that this year, too.
Okay, thank you. And, and we're lucky to have an assistant superintendent, curriculum director that has such a specialized knowledge about special education. Dr. Scollins, who would never advertise this, I was told, did her dissertation for her doctorate in an area relative to special education. So that's pretty awesome and lends itself to further insight and collaboration with our director of student services. So if there's nothing more in the presentation, I'll open it up to the members of the community. If that's all right with the school committee members who have been waiting patiently to have some questions addressed. First is Jean Healy Dippled of 93 South Main Street. She states and asks, last year, questions were asked about data collected about the tiered approach, including data on those in child study and out of those children studied those referred by the administration versus parents for an evaluation and the outcomes, in parentheses, qualified for disability or not. Those on IEPs and their progress, et cetera. We know there will be unusual focus on children struggling due to the pandemic. So it will be important and helpful to have comprehensive data collected from the start, including if and when advocating for more resources across the various sources of school and town funds. So I don't know, Mrs. Sirwanke, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, data drives everything and is going to be very, very important for us to collect data and to collect data moving forward. I think that, you know, and, and I talked a bit about this in some CPAC meetings and things like that. I think that it's going to be very important this year as we kind of have this focus and this lens and we are moving forward with these initiatives and these ideas to start collecting that data from the beginning and build on that as we go and enter it knowing what it is that we are asking for and being able to control kind of some of the variables. So we know the outcomes that we're getting. I think to look back on data and try to extrapolate what it means. Sometimes it doesn't always draw a clear line for us. So I really very much want to do that. I very much believe in data, but I really want to do it from the beginning of our school year this year, moving forward with all of our goals and initiatives that, you know, I talked about and Dr. Scollins talked about that we have in place, so we can develop and watch these things grow.
So, and as I ask these questions, school committee members, if you have any thoughts that are raised or relevant to the questions themselves, just speak up, because otherwise I'll move on to the next comment. And I, I have one such, one such question, Mrs. Sirwanke. So, um, having established that it is important to collect that data, um, can you? And I understand there, there may be, I mean, obviously there are confidentiality concerns with certain information surrounding IEPs in many facets of student services. But that being said, if there is, is there an ability for you to constantly? You know, you're here once a month. So with the intention of updating us, can you sort of consider the data collection process in your updates and sort of let the community know what you've been doing to collect that data? What kind of data you've been collecting? And then as it's in a sort of presentable format, or it, it comes to some sort of, you know, milestone where you think that you are able to present it in a meaningful, valuable way. You know, maybe you can do that throughout your, your continuous appearances here at the school committee meetings. That might be helpful if that's possible.
I think that's very possible and I think it would be kind of an important part of my monthly updates with you. I think that this past year, kind of, you know, being in school committee on a monthly basis during COVID, a lot of what we talked about was kind of COVID driven. And then, you know, it started, I started, I know, trying to do some talking about some of the other things that are really important in student services, almost kind of like one at a topic at a time at school committee meetings. But I think with the new strategic plan and with this focus, that will kind of, you know, almost, if you will, focus my presentations and certainly I think, what are we doing with these initiatives? And what have we learned so far? And what is the data telling us so far will be an important part of each of them.
I think also, if I could just mention that, you know, data, it's a tricky thing when we're interpreting it. Sometimes you need to really look at the qualitative data, too, and really how people are feeling about what's going on, rather than just looking at some numbers. Because clearly in a child study scenario, if the tiered, the tiered model is working, perhaps it's, it's making sure that we cut down on some evaluations and some, some things, because we will have helped the students at a tier who may not need to go to the next level. So it's just, it's, it's hard to sometimes measure data based on past experience to current experience without also looking at that qualitative data and hearing from families, hearing how things are going, how they felt that their struggling student was treated and handled. And so, so that's important data, too, to, to make this all kind of tie in. And, and, and I want everyone to know that I'm not trying to say that there aren't students out there who need to be evaluated. That's not what I'm saying wrong. I'm just saying that the data, looking at the data throughout the process can be misleading without looking at that qualitative piece as well.
And that qualitative piece is really, really important. One of the things that we are finishing up in my office this summer to get ready to go is a, a survey with every IEP, so that we can get that feedback from parents on, you know, those kinds of things about, you know, their experiences and things like that.
That's great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Sirwanke. I'm sorry, I'm just parallel processing and getting some other comments and trying to respond. But our next comment is from Ms. Abigail Sullivan of 87 Pleasant Street. She states, asks, I am very encouraged to see MTSS and literacy for all listed as priority goals for the district. I think your idea to create a process guide for the district as a whole is an excellent idea. What specific steps is Coas of Public Schools taking to adjust practices after the release of the dyslexia guidelines from DESI this spring? Can we expect all kindergarten kids at Ausgood to be screened for dyslexia as outlined in the guidelines?
So do you want me to answer this one? So we, we will be and we have been, Dibbles eight is a considered dyslexia screener. We also are going to be using I-RAY and their assessment. That will be new for us and that's going to be K through eight, looking at reading and mathematics. So that also has a dyslexia screener in it. If we feel that a student has shows us that there could be the opportunity for dyslexia, that that could be a possibility, we will move and use the SheaWits. But we do have a variety, we already had set that up a year ago in response to Desi's guidelines. We had already created our plan and using assessments that we already had and now adding those other pieces along with the MTSS, one of the most important things we want to find and make sure is that our core instruction is strong and that our literacy at our earliest ages is being addressed strongly. So we are working with Teaching Leading Alliance, Learning Alliance, to work with our teachers around the teaching of reading and the science of reading. So they'll be working with us, they started in the spring, they're going to continue with us this year and will probably work with them for the next couple of years around really fine tuning our reading. And we have foundations in there also currently. So there's, you know, lots of things that are already in place. TLA is going to really help us work together to use what we have and then build upon those pieces. So it's at the top of our list of things, because we want to make sure that we're not missing anybody. So I think as our strategic plan has states and as Barbara has talked about and Dr. Sullivan, we're going to be moving full court press with making sure that our early literacy is is as strong as it possibly can be.
And we also have a professional development set up on one of our first days on not just, you know, screeners, but dyslexia and screeners that teachers are going to, really all, a good number of staff are going to be participating in.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you both. Next question is from Elizabeth Frazier. Oh, well, Mrs. Sullivan sort of followed up as you were answering. I think it makes sense to just skip to that question. So Mrs. Frazier, I will just get to your question in a second, but I think it makes sense to say. So Mrs. Sullivan of 87 Pleasant Street states, Dibbles eight does not look at rapid naming for one. If Dibbles eight was enough, then kids would not be getting to Deer Hill without being identified. What specific steps will Ausgood staff be taking to minimize the number of issues that bubble up in grades three through five when the window for early intervention has closed?
Sorry, I'm just, just give me a second, I'm going to reread what, sorry. All right. So we just don't use Dibbles eight. We have a variety of assessments that we use. So it's not just that one, that one just happens to be considered, but in your, the question that you asked around the screener. So we will, we have I-Ready two, which is going to help us. But again, that's why we're looking at our, our core instruction. And we're going to be working with our teachers around making sure that they have a stronger sense of the science of reading, so that they really understand some of those other pieces that we, you know, that they may not have had in, in their, in their teacher's training. And so we do believe that, you know, the more, the more knowledge we give, the better it will be for our, for our students. Because our teachers will be armed with really being able to identify concerns that they may have. So I hope that helps.
And in partnering with, in partnering with TLA, this is a long-term partnership for us. You know, this is a process, this is a growth. And yeah, you know, we're going to continue to develop and, and, and we're going to get there. And, you know, there are a lot of reasons that things bubble up in grades three through five. You know, certainly some of the, you know, interventions at, you know, the younger grade levels. That's why we're starting there, that's what we want to see. And we want to be able to reduce some of those. And some of those are going to come up anyway. And then we'll really know what it is that we're looking at and be able to address those.
Right. And on top of that, we are adding 2.5 reading specialists, one at Ausgood and one at Deer Hill. We posted for those because we do really want to make sure that we have as much support as possible at the early ages, because we want to, want to catch anything that could possibly come our way for a student.
And that was what, that is a tip of the hat to the Essar Fund funding that we have that we discussed with the finance facilities, which I'll be updating the committee in, in the next meeting.
Sorry.
No, that's the point, though. Those early literacy was a major concern for us. And when I say concern, it's so important. And that was a real focus when the leadership team got together and looked at what we needed was to add the, the point five reading specialist, so.
Oh, thank you. Um, I just want to clarify, and I think I'm understanding this correctly. So like, obviously, Dibbles eight is already given to all kids across the board. And then are you saying that I-Ready will also be given to everyone? Okay, it's not just kids who pop in Dibbles, it will be everyone. Okay, so that includes, awesome. And that includes the rapid naming. I just was thinking along the same lines as Ms. Sullivan, just because in my job as a reading specialist, we give the RAN Raz to kindergarten and first graders. But if it's included in I-Ready, then that's, that's a good thing. It's just nice to know, I know that course that was offered by the state really spoke, really emphasized the importance of the rapid automated naming skill and identifying dyslexia. And so it's good to see that's included. Thank you.
And as you said, Dr. Scollins, as if a student spikes in one of those, then the investment in the the future screeners like the SheaWits, for instance, then those come into play, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else in terms of response? Are we good? Mrs. Sullivan did follow up, saying, "So encouraged to hear about the dyslexia training in September. Sounds great." She said, "Love it. So amazing to hear about more reading support at Ausgood." Thank you for your participation, Ms. Sullivan, as always. And we move on to Elizabeth Frazier, who did not note her address, but will, as I'm reading this, I'm sure, so that I can note that on the minutes. She asks, "Would the school committee consider improving the social and emotional health of the special education students by eliminating the masks and distancing this fall, which directly impacts the mental and emotional health of all students? Kids are currently attending extended school year and summer school mask free, and progress has been night and day compared to the lack of progress last year. For special education students, the masks are even more detrimental to their mental health as they struggle in the classroom at baseline. If masks are a must, would the school committee consider allowing elementary, middle and high school special education students on IEPs and other to forego the mask as it directly impacts their education negatively? OT services, speech, and other therapies and specialized instruction." So I will say this, where this really focuses on the mask issue and whether or not we're going to require those. And Ms. Frazier did note that her address is 27 Windy Hill Road. Thank you, Ms. Frazier. I stated at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know if Ms. Frazier was there or not. We're, we, we have a special meeting that we're going to hold with regards to the masking requirements, any sort of COVID-related measures. We'll have a special meeting to discuss that. We're not going to make any decisions about masking requirements and anything of the like tonight, because it's just not fair. First of all, we don't have the appropriate members of the community present for that discussion. We need, you know, certain information presented, so that, you know, any decision that's made is going to be a fully informed one. But also, just as importantly, not everyone had noticed that we'd be discussing that at this meeting. I mean, it's not even on the agenda. So we would never be making an impactful decision on a, you know, I guess, for lack of a better phrase, controversial, or I guess just impactful issue like masking, without making sure everyone had noticed. So, Mrs. Frazier, I know you usually attend the meetings. We will appropriately advertise the special meeting with regards to the, the coronavirus measures that may or may not be taken in the fall, including masks at the special meeting. And that's likely to take place next week. But it, the specific date hasn't been confirmed yet, because I just haven't had a chance to coordinate that with everyone that we need to. There's, there's more than just the school committee. So we're not gonna, we, there's no way to answer that right now. Will we consider that? Sure, we can consider that and much more information, as, as, you know, it's, it's provided to us in that special meeting surrounding masking. She, Ms. Frazier follows up, saying, "I guess my point about the masks is to make the school committee aware of the extra difficulty the masks have presented to special education children." No, that's good. And it has been, and that is certainly an issue for sure in, in the overall consideration of that. But again, that is certainly going to be one of those issues that come up at the special meeting, talking about masks. And I urge you to attend and bring it up again. But it, it has been brought up not only, not only in this forum, but to Dr. Sullivan, to myself, perhaps to other school committee members. Actually, I know to other school committee members. So don't think that we're not aware. But again, special meeting, probably next week, bring up any concerns you have. Everyone come to the table, talk as much as they want about the masks. That's when we'll, we'll make the decision about that. Okay? After everyone talks about it. So don't be worried. You will be heard. That, those, that's the, that's the entirety of the comments I have in the Q and A. So now that we've heard from the families, we'll move to the school committee, starting alphabetically with Mrs. Coliri.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Erwanka, very much. And thank you, Dr. Collins and Dr. Sullivan, for your responses and input too. I have just a couple of questions. One question is how the adjustment counselors intersect with your department? I know that they often work with students, of course, and team members, but wondering if you can help me understand a little bit more how they collaborate, how they sort of function as, you know, a peer group within the schools.
Sure. So the school adjustment counselors really do kind of, you know, focus on and meet the needs of all of the students. Some are more focused on students, perhaps, in programs, in special education programs, others in general education. However, you know, again, I kind of share them with the building principals. Everything is a student service. They come to my department meetings. And I, you know, have reached out to them and had meetings just with them to, to touch base on things, whether students are students on IEP, students on 504s, or general education students. Like I said, it's, it's kind of all a student service. And so I wrap around the school adjustment counselors, the principals wrap around the school adjustment counselors, and, and we're kind of, we've got them all together.
Okay. So they sort of, I'm just sort of curious as to how the adjustment counselors throughout the district are like how cohesive that process is, right? From, from one to the next, and, and how that works? Is that like a specific thing, or is that a your department thing?
So I, there's two adjustment counselors. There's one at the middle school and one at the high school. So.
Well, there's, there are counselors at the Deer Hill on the.
Oh, that's true.
Yes. So there's one, one at each school, if you will.
Right, right. I apologize. Yeah, I forgot about the.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I got you. Sorry about that. Yeah, so I think that, you know, they do meet periodically together, like a, you mean, like from a vertical perspective? You know, from a K through 12?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what Barbara is talking about. So she does that, and she works with them to do that. And they have the conversations. And then they're very involved in the transition as the students move up. So when they go from second to third, you know, when they're going from school to school, from five to six, and then again, from eight to nine. So they're very connected that way.
So another thing would be, Dr. Collins, is remember their paramount role in our child study programs. And that's very important, because as we further refine MTSS and really try to work on the systems that govern each school. I mean, it sounds like some of your questions actually is around consistency and sort of cohesiveness and approach from school to school. I think that's, that's a place where that will become even more apparent as you, as families get a real strong sense of the consistency that we're building between our approach at each level. So I, I think that the role of the adjustment counselor in, in child study will be a place where that consistency will be seen in the coming, coming months and years.
Yep. Good. Okay, thank you. And then, how are, how are parents interacting with these assessments? Like these, these assessments that all the kids are getting in elementary school, right? Like, so let's say, my, my daughter's going into fourth grade, and it seems like we just said that all the students, K to eight, I think you said, are getting assessed pretty universally and regularly. Yep. So, so for instance, how would I be made aware of what that assessment looks like for my daughter? And this may be a function of me not having a kid in the schools physically last year. Maybe I would know the answer if I did.
So, so I-RAY will be new for us this year. So we, that will be implemented for the first time in the fall. And that's a benchmark assessment that happens three times a year. So normally, what will happen is that assessments are given, and they're, they're pulled together and distilled by the teacher to let the families, families know where their children stand. Obviously, if there were some concerns, they would, you know, have those discussions with families around where they saw a concern, and they would, you know, explain what their process was for helping that child, whether it's they thought they needed to go to child study, or they were consulting with, you know, whoever they thought needed that could help their child. We don't necessarily give out the protocols. We wouldn't do that, or share the, the actual tests themselves, because then they, they can't be used again. So, so, you know, we kind of, if that's what you mean. But they would give, not necessarily raw scores. I guess they could, but you wouldn't necessarily know what a raw score meant. So they might say, you know, your child fell within this benchmark, they're, you know, they're, they're able to do X, Y, and Z. So it would really be conversations that parents and teachers would have. They might use it, they might use that data at conferences. If they had a concern, they'd be calling before then. Is that answering your question?
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Yes. And then, another question I had is about, you said, Mrs. Erwanka, I know that you've sort of had a very busy year. Completely understand that. But you said that you're going to be proactive in updating the information that's forward-facing on the website and such. And I just was wondering, I, you know, I, I looked at the website just a bit before the presentation, and the Student Services Procedures Manual seems like maybe it could use a little spiffing up. I just don't know if that's on, yeah, okay, good. Okay, just.
That's the process guideline that I was talking about, absolutely.
Okay, I wasn't sure if that was the same one, or if that was going to be too different. Okay, great. And then my last question is just whether this presentation is going to live anywhere that's accessible for people, because I think that would be helpful. Maybe, Dr. Sullivan, if it, if it can be something that we can link to, so that people can take a look at it if they want to know more.
Oh, yeah, definitely. We'll put it prominently on our, hopefully, improving website as we're clarify some of the issues of that as well. But yes, absolutely. Make it very prominent on our, on all our pages, actually.
Great. Okay, thank you. That's it. Thanks, Mrs. Erwanka. I appreciate it.
Of course.
Thank you, Mrs. Coliri. Mr. Dial, before we get to you, Mrs. Muir made a comment, and I, Cassie Muir, and I think she sent me her 40 Red Gate Lane. She asked, "One of my questions about special education, this district deals with economies of scale. We are a small district, which was very appealing to us when moving here. But now having needs to access special education, we often feel the shortfalls of, we often realize the shortfalls of being smaller. What off, what other districts of our size does our district use as a benchmark to model after?"
So really, what I do is I partner with the other districts on this, in the South Shore, and with the other special education and our student services directors on the South Shore. It's, 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 it's an interesting question, because in, in my mind, I guess, especially with all of the work this year that I did, you know, with Plymouth and with Situate, even though, you know, they're larger districts, it's not so much about scale and size as it is, no matter what your size, there are particular, there are particular things that you have to do. There are particular things that you have to be able to provide. And, and if you can't, you have to wait, find a way to provide them. And so it's, it's just more, I think, about, you know, what are other people doing, no matter what their size of their district? How are they addressing, you know, the issues, the concerns, things like that? And, you know, really kind of sharing that information and thinking of it in, in a way that it makes sense in your particular district, maybe not necessarily just because of size, but because of whomever it is that you are as a district, is, is the way that I look at it. I, I don't see myself or Cohasset necessarily as the same, you know, as another small district. You know, and, and there are things that we do that some larger districts don't do, and, and have said, oh, that's, you know, that's really interesting. That's really good. That's really something. And then there are some things that, you know, larger districts do that I think, oh, you know, we can, we can pare this down and make this work for us, and it can look like this, and we can do it like that. And I think that's more really what it's about.
Thank, I just had a follow-up question related to that. Again, not to cut you off as you dial, it's just related to Ms. Muir's question. So, understanding what you just said, and I think that actually we approach a lot of the different aspects of our district that way. We, we often say, you know, in a number of decisions I can recall in the recent past, it's always, oh, well, Norwell does this, well, Duxbury does this, well, Marshfield does this. And, and our response has typically been, well, you know, every district is different in a lot of different ways. It's not just, you know, something, you know, maybe geographically similar, or even size, maybe, you know, similar in terms of enrollment. But that, having been said, are there some districts that you have worked with or have been exposed to that you feel do do a number of things in a really excellent fashion that you'd seek to sort of model? I, 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 you know, you know, are there other, any districts that you think do anything especially well, is basically what I'm asking? That you can identify by name, because I think that some of the parents are wondering, you know, oh, like, what districts do you think do do some things well? And, you know, so trying to, trying to, at least extract some specific examples from you, really, for, for, for Ms. Muir.
Yes, no, I, I fully understand what you are saying. You know, I, I have to say, I, I think that, you know, and, and I'm not saying this, you know, lightly, or, you know, politically or anything like that. I, I think that our district does things, you know, really, really well. I think we have just really high-quality people here. And that they do a really good job in terms of, you know, service delivery and, and providing things. I know that, you know, when I have had a question about something, you know, or, you know, an approach to something, or, or a way to do something, you know, I, I have reached out to, you know, because I know people that I've reached out to, you know, Situate, I have reached out to Plymouth, I have reached out to Marshfield, you know, to get some feedback and some ideas. But they're, they're such individual things. It's not like, oh, you know, they do student services really well here. But there, there tend to be more like individual questions, you know, things like, you know, oh, you know, how do you handle your proportionate share? Or how do you, you know, address your, you know, do you have a social worker in your district? How are you addressing your social emotional needs? Things like that. And, 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 you know, complexions of communities are so different that you have to take that into account when you look at the way people are doing business and how they're doing it, and things like that.
And it can also boil down to the programmatic approach, like you may have a language-based program. You know, at certain districts, you have, have, have various programs for, you know, a variety of reasons that probably are more effective than others. And, you know, it's sort of in a small district, it's a balance to try to figure, you know, flexibility to be able to offer what we can to students who show multiple needs. And then also, just keeping that sense of being able to, you know, function really well in a small community, which does boil down to individual service. So, you know, I'm sure you, you kind of glean things from various areas. And we're, you know, we are in a nice place for school. I mean, this is, Coas is fabulous, and the districts around us are also very strong, so.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's a lot of people out there to, to kind of get good ideas and good things from. And the other thing too is, you know, and I mentioned in, in my presentation, that continuous cycle in tiered focus monitoring of improvement. And one of the things that, that, you know, I really wanted to do in the spring, you know, COVID aside, we're going to do, you do it this year in the fall, is to really have someone objective come in and look at us through a self-assessment lens, and being able to say, you know, for you and your district, for you, you know, this particular area, and, and, you know, what you have here, here are the things that you are doing well, and here is how you could flesh some of these things out and do more in these areas. And, and that's always really, really helpful, too.
Okay, well, thank you. And not to put you on the spot, I just, you know, as these things, I mean, this is why I wanted to have this meeting. I want to sort of ask some of the tougher questions. So, you know, regarding, just really just student services. I, I know people feel pretty passionate about it. So I see Mrs. McGee just asked a question, but Mr. Dial's been waiting. So, Mr. Dial.
Let's, actually, let's do the community. Communities are very important, unless, unless you need a breather.
Mister, no, Mister Dial, a man for others. I like it. Let's, let's, let's move to Mrs. McGee's comment. She resides at 9 Orchard Drive. "Hi, so nice to see you all. Thanks for the presentation. Not a question but a comment. The graphic and explanation on these slides that shows the process to identify, evaluate, determine eligibility, define, and then deliver necessary services may, may seem, seem like a long time, especially to parents who are watching their child struggle. But there are timelines defined by law, so might be helpful to include also special education parent advisory council, MTSS, multi-tiered." Um, Special Education Parent Advisory Council, MTSS, Multi-Tierred System Supports. We need that list of acronyms. So sort of a key to those. That, that is, that is true. I, I always try to, 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 to sort of decipher those. And I forgot this time around, um, for everyone that's watching. So, um, that's a good point. Um, and we should do that.
Very true, very true. And we will definitely include, um, kind of, you know, what all of these acronyms mean in all of our things. And also, um, you know, in, in kind of updating the website too, the timelines involved. You know, it, it does, it feels like a long time. We try to kind of keep the different tiers of MTSS within a matter of timeline of weeks, so that, you know, we can come back and revisit and move children through the process, but give them time to really respond to the strategies and the interventions. And then if we are moving to, um, an initial evaluation, um, you know, we have, we have thirty days within which to test. And then we have another fifteen within which to hold the meeting. It's a forty-five day process. We don't use all of it if we don't have to. Um, but that is our limit. We cannot go beyond that. And, and that does seem and feel like a long time. Um, so like I said, you know, we certainly never put things off, um, you know, and, and kind of bump up against the outer limits of those forty-five days. We do it, you know, in as timely a manner as we can, but that is, um, that is our deadline, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dial.
Right, I know everyone's been waiting. Um, as I've got some, some insightful comment. I actually, uh, uh, wanted to defer to, uh, Ms. McGee because I, I also, as the newest member of the school committee, got a little lost in the alphabet soup of acronyms. So, um, so that's helpful. And that, and that colors my, my first question. Um, where can parents go to get more information on how to engage with the schools to get these services? Uh, you know, and, and your funnel, you described at the beginning of the, at the, at the concern, and a lot of the concerns begin, uh, with parents at home, watching their, uh, watching their kids grow and, 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 you know, experience challenges. So what's the best place for, uh, for parents to go get the information? And will this slide, I think, which, which is excellent, be posted somewhere where people can refer to it later on or something that has the same information?
Sure, this, this I believe will be posted on, on our website, but also, um, you know, depending upon where, um, you know, where the family is at and where the child is at with their level of concern, you know, obviously their child's teacher is, you know, the first and foremost, um, you know, contact for them to go to. Um, the building principal can also help them kind of with this larger process. Because, you know, as I indicated, you know, I work so closely with them. Um, there are special education teachers at every grade level at every building. There is an elementary team chairperson, Kathy Breen, who oversees both elementary schools. And you can see her on the slide that's in front of you right now. There is, um, a secondary team chairperson, Michael Stapleton, who oversees the, um, middle school and the high school. So if there are specific special education questions, you know, even if it's about process, you know, they are there. And, you know, I will be honest with you, um, I am there. I am always there. Um, you know, and, and parents do, you know, recognize what, you know, student services means. Um, I think I took eighty-eight phone calls last year and, um, took, you know, walked parents through a lot of what this meant and what the process was and things like that. And, um, that's, that is the real work. You know, I, I love talking to parents about children. So, um, you know, even if you, you know, parents feel like, oh, my goodness, I, I shouldn't start at the top, if you will, I shouldn't start there. Um, if you don't know where to start, it's fine. Start with me.
Right. Thank you. And, um, you know, I, 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 I feel really comfortable with you at the, the helm of this. It's a big job, a, a lot going on. And, uh, you know, I'm looking forward to hopefully a school year where we have a little more sense of normalcy and we can, we can move towards some, some, uh, some good objectives. Um, on a longer term, not for this meeting in particular, but one of the things that I've heard from, from parents is, you know, we, we naturally do a lot of focus on our special education and kids with special needs. But there are also kids who have needs because they're the excelling, uh, and they wanna be challenged more and they need to be more challenged. So, you know, I'd be interested in, uh, maybe at another time, uh, learning about what some of the stuff the schools are doing on that end of the spectrum as well. Because we've gotta make sure we think about all the students.
Absolutely. Yes, and, and certainly we can talk about kind of that, that other realm of differentiated instruction. Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dial. Uh, Mr. Kearney, any, anything to add or any questions?
Yeah, well, no, I don't have any questions. I just got, um, I just got a kind of a statement on how grateful we are that we have such a good community of people that come together for special needs children and, and how important it is. And this presentation's awesome. I echo what my colleagues were saying about trying to get this out for everybody to see. Cause I, I often think, you know, we're so lucky to see all this information, that we have all this information. So to be able to share that, and, you know, I also wanna recognize CPAC and all the hard work they do as well. So it's, I, I think that the, the district's in a good place. I'm glad that Chairman McCollum brought this up tonight, because, you know, this is something that, like you were reiterating, that we do once a month. And it's, it's nice to know that we're, we're, we're working on things and we're just making, uh, improvements. And I've seen it in the last three years. And, um, uh, the word is grateful and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Um, Ms. St. Orange?
Yep, sorry, just couldn't find my mouse there. Um, my question is, um, having to do with kind of as you're going through and, and rethinking and refining the process and talking about transparency and communication. I'm curious if there is currently or will be kind of an explicit expectation when a family does express concern to a teacher. Is there an expected timeline for a response? Even if that response is, I'm not sure yet. I'm gonna look into it and get back to you. I think one of the most kind of anxiety provoking things is waiting, right? And, and having to, um, just wonder where one's question has gone. And so I'm just curious if there is an expected timeline right now um, that's been expressed to teachers or if there will be. Um, I just know in different schools in which I've worked, there have been different kind of timelines laid out for us. I just didn't know if that existed in terms of this process.
You know, certainly within the world of special education, we have timelines for everything, including responses to parents.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, as far as, um, you know, kind of starting at another level and a, a general and teacher response to a parent about something, um, Dr. Skones, I'm gonna defer to you. I think it's, you know, really a building-based kind of a thing. And I, I think the expectation is that, you know, teachers will get back to parents in a timely manner. I don't know if there's a number of days.
Yeah, I don't, and, and, and Dr. Sullivan can, um, answer too. I don't believe there is. We haven't really set that expectation. Um, specifically, you know, in twenty-four hours or something along those lines. Is that what you mean? Like, please respond to a parent in forty-eight hours or?
Yeah, that is what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't think there's been really, um, a set expectation that we have done. But I, you know, I think as we're moving forward, looking at refining our MTSS process, as we're looking, um, at all that we do, um, I, I do think that, you know, certainly conversations and Dr. Schlem, I don't know if there have been conversations prior to me getting here around that expectation.
Well, I would, I, I would absolutely reiterate the expectation that, um, all of our employees are communicative and are getting back to people in, in, uh, appropriate timeframes. And there shouldn't be a long wait for anything here. And remember, it's a team. You know, you have, um, all kinds of people supporting that. Um, so if you're, if you're not getting an answer, you know, please communicate to, they should be answering you. And I believe the vast majority of our teachers do that. But if there's a, a situation where you're not getting that kind of response, you have, um, adjustment counselors, guidance counselors a, at some levels, you have, um, assistant principals at other, at levels, and then you have, uh, principals. You certainly have, if it's a, a, if it has a, a, a student services need, you have Mrs. Sawanka here. You have the team chairs, you have Dr. Skones, you have me. Um, you know, obviously, we, we want you to communicate to the teachers, but you have a whole team at your call here to help you. Um, but yes, we, I would reiterate the expectation for staff to get back to, um, to parents a, as soon as possible with, with some helpful dialogue. And I believe the staff would want me to say that too, because I, I believe they do that. Um, in, in, in almost every case.
Okay.
I thought that was exactly it, but I mean.
I guess I just, I, I give, I guess just as a teacher, I have literally been told, like, you need to respond within twenty-four hours. And I, I just know from conversations with friends and colleagues, that's not always the case. And I think that when we're talking about our concerns about our children, every single minute is pretty, uh, heavy when you're waiting. So I was just curious, like, as we're refining this process, might we tighten up and be more explicit about that timeline? Just so that communication on both ends can be productive and, and, and things don't have to escalate. You know, I think so often, things don't need to escalate to Mrs. Serwanka when we're concerned about a classroom level issue. But I think just because we're naturally concerned about our children, it feels very emergent when something comes up.
Yeah, I mean, I would say I, I, I believe our staff are professionals and I wanna make sure that they are afforded with that. Um, the, that courtesy of making sure that, yeah, it's an expectation you're gonna get back soon. Hate to have to throw a, a, a time limit at them, but I do understand, uh, the need for them to, to respond appropriately and, and quickly. So, yeah, that is, there's nothing more important when a, a family member, uh, you know, parent or guardian reaches out about their kid. That takes a lot of, it's hard, it's emotional, it, it takes courage. And you're really putting yourself out there to ask, uh, for someone who you're looking for guidance from to respond to you. So I would expect that that is, is a, is a huge, uh, and paramount, um, responsibility that are, that everyone, including myself, i- is taking seriously. When someone, someone replies to me, uh, I'm, I'm in the same place. I, I really wanna make sure I, I respond quickly and that I do what I can to help that person. So that's an absolute expectation, Lydia, that all of our staff do that. And we'll do whatever we need to, to, to help push that along. But I, you know, I, I'd like to respect my staff as professionals to do that now. So, absolutely.
All right, thank you. I also really like the funnel model, Mrs. Serwanka. I found that to be a very helpful visual. Um, we were just at the carousel, putting pennies down the little funnel. I was like, oh, yeah, things do really speed up towards the end there. But it can feel like a, a slow cycle when you're getting started. So I appreciate that. It helps me to process things as well.
Right, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna move to a question from one of the parents, but first I, I just will, on, on, sort of, um, related to Mrs. St. Orange's comment. I, I will note, Dr. Sullivan, um, and Dr. Skolins, um, they, they both respond very quickly to, uh, family, um, inquiries and comments and concerns. And, uh, and I'm sure Mrs. Serwanka does too. I'm just, uh, oftentimes included on the correspondence with, uh, with the superintendents. Um, and, uh, I just have faith in the fact that, and I completely echo Ms. St. Orange's sentiments. But I have faith in the fact from an operational perspective that Dr. Sullivan expects that of all the staff. Um, that comes from, that trickles down from, from the top of the, you know, of the management of the school. So I, 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 I feel confident that Dr. Sullivan is, is, is requiring that. And, and, and I agree with you, Ms. St. Orange, that that should absolutely happen, should be quick. I, I professionally, I, I have absolutely no time for individuals that can't get back to me within twenty-four hours. It's in this day and age. It's just, it's, it's, it's unacceptable. So, and Dr. Sullivan does that within, usually within the hour. Um, and, and he may get as many emails as Joe Biden. So, you know, it's pretty impressive. Um, but anyway, we'll move on to, uh, a comment from, uh, one of our, uh, one of our district's parents. Um, Ms. Janet, Janet Cunningham at Fifteen Hill Street. She, uh, states, responding to Mrs. Cleary's question earlier, my experience at the Oz Good is that families have to ask specifically for test results regarding progress monitoring. Discussions about progress are standard, but many families do not know they can ask for the results of progress monitoring tests. In parenthesis, not protocol, just the scores, if they're looking for something more objective, especially when their child is not meeting the benchmarks. This information is very helpful to families. So I think that's more of a comment than a question. Um, Mrs. Elizabeth Frazier, um, states in her address was stated earlier, uh, in the meeting. Um, Dr. Sullivan is the quick, there we go. Dr. Sullivan is the quickest responder of all time. Question, Cohen, can the child study portion of the funnel be eliminated? It takes time and it doesn't provide any useful data. Struggling students need to be assessed. In a recent CPAC meeting in the spring, parents asked how many teachers had recommended a full battery of academic testing for a student struggling in their classroom. Do we have that data?
I'll let, I'll let, um.
I'm unmuted.
Jones, go for that one.
So certainly, um, the child study model cannot be eliminated. Um, it, MTSS comes to us from DESI. It comes from, for good reason. It provides us with a lot of information and data on children in terms of needs and in terms of strategies that work and in terms of interventions that can work, that might not necessitate special education services. But also, all of that data is used in the pre-referral process. That prop, that pre-referral, all of that data that happens before a student is referred is a necessary part of the process. It, it's identified through DESI what pre-referral took place. Um, and that's what we use all of that data for. Certainly, you know, I understand, as, um, Mrs. St. Andrew was saying earlier, as, as we were even saying earlier, things are processed and things take time. And it's hard when children are struggling to take time. Um, you know, some of what we're looking to do in the MTSS model is to really define some of those time limits and make sure that we are taking a look, revisiting, moving through, moving on and establishing, you know, the number of weeks that, you know, should be taking place for those things. Um, and that will help the process. But it really is an integral part of the process. And, um, you know, back when we used to call it RTI, um, you know, it was response to intervention. It wasn't like, you know, a rush to an initial evaluation. Um, and you have to, you know, be careful of that and be cognizant of the data that you're going to collect through that intervention and how you really use it. Um, even if the child needs to go on to that initial evaluation process, all of that data helps you create that eventual IEP for that child. Um, so it really is an integral part of the process, but we are very much aware of the timeframes and how they feel and, um, and, and what they should be. So that, that is a piece of that that we certainly, you know, will be working on and, and that I hear. Okay. And, and, you know, testing doesn't tell you everything. Um, you know, you really do have to look at, you know, the child as a learner. You have to look at all of that data and information that the teacher knows about that child because they've gotten to know them. You have to look at those observations and you have to look at those work samples. And, and a lot of the soft stuff that, you know, really identifies who your child is, as well as kind of that hard test data.
You know, I also, I also hear in the question, though, that something we've identified is that, and this isn't to disparage the great work that's happening at the, at the building level, but we have to be better at MTSS and work, uh, hard to make sure that what we're doing and the great work we're doing is communicated to families as well, to try to, um, sort of change any perception that this isn't a worthwhile process. Because it, I think everything you mentioned there, Barbara, is absolutely accurate. But the fact that we have a, you know, a community member may be thinking that it's, that it isn't, and, and, you know, knowledgeable on it that, it just shows that we need to do some more work in, um, making sure everyone knows exactly what work we're doing. Um, and then, as I mentioned before, and this, this speaks to, um, Ms. Mrs. Cleary's question about, um, consistency and, uh, progression vertically. We have to make sure that that's happening in our system. So this is, you know, really articulated well in our strategic plan. And I think, um, hopefully, as we move through the year, uh, this feeling, if this was representative of anything out there, dwindles because we're being more, um, sort of, uh, what's the word? I, I don't know, we're just being more direct with and transparent with what's happening, uh, to, 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 to show what we're doing with MTSS. Didn't quite say that how I wanted to, but you got the gist.
Okay, and Ms. Fraser just followed up. It ta- she says, it takes so much time and I don't think parents realize they can skip that part and just request the testing.
Yeah, I, can I just speak to that? Um, you actually, um, we would still continue with MTSS because the, the test. Because the, the testing doesn't happen in a day. So if a parent was to, and it is perfectly their right to, to ask for that evaluation. But we would still continue with MTSS because there is a timeframe and it does take time to assess the student. And as. Mrs. Sarwanka said, we use that data from MTSS. In our pre-referral process and in our whole um review when we're looking at students. So. Even though, so you actually don't skip it, it'll just continue along with the timelines around um. The requirements for a special education evaluation. Is that, did I answer that correctly, Mr. Wonka? I want to make sure.
Absolutely. Yes. It's not like as soon as you requested an evaluation, we just kind of stop. We would continue all of those interventions and continue to document them and, and move through the process.
Correct, because that's important information for us as we move forward.
And MTSS helps inform the evaluation for this student.
Correct.
It does.
Okay, um, sorry, speaking some notes here. Um, thank you. Ms. Fraser just states the child study is completely separate from the evaluation though.
Oh, well.
From the formal evaluation. So there, there's formal assessments that take place, but then there are all of the other pieces as well.
All of that information would be brought to the table, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we have a legal responsibility to test if, if the initiates that. We don't want to, you know, there's no problems about that. I just.
No, no, and there's no delay in that.
No.
It's just that we would continue these processes through it.
Ms. Fraser says, no, it is not. So she's disagreeing with what you're saying.
Okay.
What was she disagreeing with? I just wanted to make sure.
I think the response to her assertion that child study is completely separate from the evaluation. She, and to Mr. Wong is, I think, response to that. I, I, I think because it came in right after, I mean, I, I, there's no way I can.
Okay.
They, they. They can exist separately, if you will. You can go through a child study without going through an initial evaluation. But if you were going through an initial evaluation, um, some of those MTSS child study kinds of interventions and tiered supports can be going on in conjunction.
Okay, she, she clarified that the child study info is not brought to the evaluation.
You know, that information is used in terms of the total package of the child along with the formal evaluations.
Yeah. The child study information isn't the formal evaluation, but it's.
Right.
It, it does help inform how we help the student.
Yes.
Okay, so um, what I will say to Ms. Fraser is just so that we're not having like a private conversation in the school committee. Is, because I, I want, this is, this is why we're having it, but I just, it's, I, I want also to. Identify areas where we need to sort of educate and inform the families a little bit more or encourage discourse. And Mrs. Fraser, I, I, I think you should reach directly out. Mrs. Sarwanka's door is always open.
Yeah.
Reach directly out to her. You can have a meeting with her and Dr. Scollins or her and Dr. Scollins, Dr. Sullivan, whatever you want. They are, they are your district's leadership team. But I just don't want to make it like a, you know, I don't want to have like a conversational. Exchange right now, um, because you know, there are other comments, so I'm not trying to dismiss anything. I just invite everyone to s- to, to sort of set up. Their own meeting at which they can candidly and openly discuss all these issues. Because that, that is, that is sort of one of the reasons we, we are having these meetings to encourage that sort of discourse as well.
It absolutely is. And if there's, you know, an experience exists that has been different, I would want to hear about that and I would want, you know, to have that conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay, so um, uh, Cassie Muir, uh, she makes a comment. Thank you Craig and School Committee for taking an interest in this topic. I think there is a disconnect in personal experiences in our district with kids who are struggling in the ideal presented timeline today. As a parent who had to seek outside testing to get my child assistance during COVID. It would be great to continue this discussion with more details and data to support the other families. Who are also new to our district or who will face learning difficulties that are still unknown. I would think that it is difficult to weed out COVID slide versus learning difference possibilities. Excuse me, let me, let me, it's just, it's a long, it's two segments. So. Uh, I would think that it is difficult to weed out COVID slide versus learning difference possibility, especially this past year. So because so many kids were behind, were the number of child studies higher this past year because of learning concerns? Or are there more to complete when school begins? And um, I am just reading these in the record. So. Mrs. Sarwanka, if you can see the comments, I don't know if you can, if, if you want to take a moment to read it, certainly do so. I just, this is virtual, so I'm obligated to read these things in the record and I know that um, sometimes it's easier to read them yourself.
Dr. Scollins.
I guess I'm, I'm wondering, are you, are you, is the question about students? Who are on IEPs or students in general ed? And that, I guess, is my question to the.
Tiered support versus IEPs?
Well, I, I think, I'm sorry, but I, I think maybe, um, it looks like the, the first part of Mrs. Muir's. Question as I was reading it, um, you know, might be something that we can kind of. Have a clarif- clarifying conversation of maybe during my segment in CPAC or something like that. Because it looks like there's some question that is very specific to special ed around like evaluation and process and procedure. And um, I would be happy to do that, you know, or, you know, on a one-to-one if, if you want to reach out to me. As far as the second part of the question around the child study. There's, there's not. There's not a number of child studies per se, like a child's name comes up and, oh, we got a child study. Every school has a weekly child study meeting. That is ongoing all year long. And obviously, you know, different children are brought up to the different meetings, but I, I don't think I can answer and Dr.
Yeah, and I think when.
Want to around, you know. How many meetings there were because they're always going on.
Yeah, and I'm not so sure, um, she's be, and the question around, uh, so many kids were behind. I'm, I'm not sure where that, where that number is coming from, but actually when we looked at our reading and our math scores. That we typically do that round of benchmark assessments at the end of the year, our students now, obviously there are some students who, you know, were still struggling, but. The majority of our students actually were right around where we would expect them to be. Yeah, it wasn't, there wasn't a great difference from previous years to, to where they landed in benchmarks. So. So I, I would say, you know, obviously I wouldn't say that there aren't some struggling readers, but um, for the most part. We fell right around benchmarks. So um. So I'm not really, I guess, and happy to have a conversation with Mrs. Muir. She wants to give me a call. I think that's probably the way to go because like. It's so hard sometimes when you're typing in a, a question and we're trying to interpret what it means and kind of figure out what you're asking us. So. Happy, you know, to, to have a conversation.
I, I. Identifying general ed kids who are falling behind, so then they need to be tested or flagged for learning concerns.
Kids, so, so that would come up in any of ours, in the assessments that teachers use on a daily basis. We, you know, like we, we have our assessments we do three times a year. Our benchmark assessments, reading specialists had, when I came on board, had done a lot of work around fine tuning that. Um, and then we added our new math program last year. So, um, again, we weren't seeing these huge deficits. Along the way this year, so I think um. I, I guess if she had specific questions, I, I could maybe, but.
I don't want to.
One of me, yeah.
I don't, I don't want to derail us, but I think it's a, it seems, and I apologize if I'm misinterpreting this, it seems to be. A pretty simple question like. As last year unfolded and as we go into this year, is there a higher number of kids who have been or will be? Studied?
There ha, I don't, I don't have the hardcore numbers in front of me, but I won't, I would say not in particular, no. I mean, I, like, not a huge spike, but again, I don't have that in front of me as to how many, you know. How many particular students were brought to child services, you know, I mean, not child services, I'm sorry.
Child study.
Child study.
Study.
Versus prior year.
Maybe, yeah, so maybe what would be helpful is if we can flag this for an agenda item in like. Like maybe October, early to mid-October and just have a conversation about how re-entry is going. And how. The Student Services Department is seeing. The general state of affairs, we might be able to sort of glean some insight on, on how last year is impacting this year.
Right, and we would be doing, yeah, we would absolutely.
Yeah, right.
And so, yeah, that makes sense. And I think too, you know, you're making me think about. Because there's been some questions around knowing what the assessments results are. They don't, it seems like families aren't feeling like they have the information that. In totality that they'd like. So I think that's a really good thing for us to look at. What would that look like? How does it look like now for parents um and teachers delivering that information to, you know, giving it to their, their, their um families? Right now, and then how, how could we improve that so that it makes more sense? It's, that's just the feeling I'm getting. That it feels like the, the people aren't getting enough information that makes sense to them. So.
Can I just piggyback on that? I feel like, you know, Mrs. Kaleri asked about dibbles, for example, and. And then Mrs. Cunningham chimed in and she is a speech therapist, I believe, so perhaps is more familiar with just screeners and benchmark assessments that are happening. Even though it's reading and not speech, but, and I am a reading specialist, so I literally give dibbles, so I don't have any questions about it. But I think that empowering our school community to know what it is, what it looks like. It feels less scary because it's a known entity and then they can have a conversation about it. From a position of knowledge. And so if we could just give a brief primer, here's what it is, here's what it looks like. Your kids are saying sounds of a word and then reading a short story about a magnetic rock, second grade passage. So. Then people kind of know what's going on and it doesn't feel like something's being withheld, right?
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, you know, that's, I'm definitely hearing that, that's a feeling for people. So those are things we'll definitely look at. And, and I think as we look at our MTSS too, and when our students are, when students have been identified as nearing, needing tier two and tier three interventions. When we're doing that progress monitoring, how's that information getting to families? Do they understand what it is that we're looking at? Again, so those are things that we're all going to work on this year. To make sure that the, that our MTSS is really tight, um, it is vertically aligned, it is consistent. Um, and then information is getting to the families. I think that's, you know, a piece that it, it seems like MTS or RTI is kind of an unknown. Um, and I think that tells me that we need to do some work on making sure that people know what it is. So um. I think that's, those are all pieces that we'll deal with.
Okay, um, Mrs. Cunningham uh asked, I should have asked, will families be aware they can ask for objective progress monitoring testing info? I received a progress report from reading specialist that my second grader made excellent progress, worked very hard. Nothing objective. I asked for the objective tests. She's a full year behind going into third grade.
Yeah, I think that, that will, that's part of what I was just kind of talking about. I appreciate that, not, not having those objective scores. I'm, I'd have to look into, you know, what kind of conversations were had, but, but maybe there's something that we need to be sending out. That's a little more of a report form, but I have to, I'd have to talk to our um principals, our reading specialists. And our teachers just to kind of look at what would that look like? And also families, like what is it that they, what would make sense for them? So. That's a, that's, you know, helpful.
And also, Dr. Scollins, in our strategic plan, we're clearly looking to refine our benchmark uh assessments. And that's something that, you know, we've, we've looked at the data and that's, that came out that we need to attend to that. So.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And this is a really good conversation. It's very healthy. You know, to get all of this out to, so we know, but just understand that we're, you're preaching to the choir where we know we, we need to. Refine that and move forward in that way and we're going to. So thanks for that comment and question.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, part of this meeting is to identify areas of improvement, right? Not just today, but to, I think, acknowledge that there are areas for improvement and invite uh members of the community to participate in that exploration of, you know. Areas where we can improve. Ms. Barbara Stefan of 260 Jerusalem Road asks, or states and asks, hi Craig and the School Committee. Thanks for holding this meeting. Dr. Scollins just referenced data that indicated that most of our students landed out where she would have expected COVID or non-COVID. Will that data be shared in a future meeting? In parenthesis, are we talking preliminary MCAS results or in-house assessments or both? Close parenthesis.
Yeah, so MCAS data, it's just, it's raw right now and it's a little bit hard to, to read. It's not great. So I'm hoping in the next couple of weeks we'll get something that's. Where they give us more information. Right now it's just a raw score. Um, and, and some of it was actually around the benchmark assessments that we did in reading and then looking at our math assessments at the end of the year from bridges. And so the reading special and math specialist gave me some information at the very end of the year around. Around what those results look like. So absolutely, I can, you know, kind of give you some percentages around where we landed. And I will do MCAS. As soon as I get that information, I will absolutely do it, something in the fall when MCAS comes in.
I figured it was raw data. Thanks. It's still helpful.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Uh, any members of the school committee have any follow-up thoughts? Okay, um, so uh. This is a hugely important uh part of our operations, obviously. And um, I think that um. And so, so the reason that. I, in conjunction with uh Mrs. Sarwanka and Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scollins. Thought it was important that we have a meeting that really focused on the entirety of our Student Services Department. Was because I think that there is, um, it's impor, as important to uh facilitate a healthy discourse on this. As it is to inform and educate about the process. I think that it is a really complex area of education. Um, I, I do not, absolutely do not uh purport to have a full understanding of that. I am a volunteer. I am not a teacher by trade. Um, and so this is, I, I am getting a crash course in this. Um, I know that uh some of our um special education families uh have, of course, educated themselves about the process. As they've discovered the need for it. Um, and so there are, I think. There's a patchwork of, of understanding amongst our families. Um, some are extremely knowledgeable, some are learning. Um, but nevertheless, I think that, you know, it's, it's our, part of our district's overall mission to make sure that everyone's on the same plane. And feels that they have um great access, uh ready access to our Student Services Department. And I think that there may be. You know, I, I'm going to speak candidly. I think there may be a, a feeling of, of, of maybe distrust. Overall, I mean, I'm, you know, in, in some, in some, you know, from some special education families, from some past experiences. But, you know, I want to, I want to reiterate that, you know, I can't remember what month Mrs. Sarwanka came on, but I mean, Mrs. Sarwanka is new. I mean, this is, you know, the, the, the leadership team is pretty new. So, and a lot of the progress was. Was um stunted a bit by the pandemic and, you know, the operational challenges we were forced to address rather than, you know. Progressing in certain arenas, not to say that we didn't, but it certainly, I think, uh, like I said, stunted our, our growth a little bit as a district. Because we had to respond to all these, we had to react to, you know, current circumstances. So. I, I, you know, I hope that we can repair some feelings of distrust. I think that, you know, there's some feelings that maybe there's like data that isn't being shared. I'm not, I'm not picking on, Mrs. Stefan just asked a question related to this and this is not why I'm saying this. This is a, an overarching concern. That there's data that's, that's being, you know, collected or is, is exist and not being um shared, but. But that's not the case. I think that like Mrs. Sarwanka has announced that she intends to take a very transparent approach to this. And will, um, and will continuously update us on, you know, any data she collects that she, that she can. I mean, there's obviously confidentially, confidentiality concerns. Um, in this, in this area, but there's certainly um of the nature that, that Ms. Stefan, it's Ms. Stefan identifies. There is certainly data that we can compile and we can share and we can use uh to improve our student services offerings and department. And. I think that um. It's important that we just acknowledge that there's always room for improvement and um, I, I, I. I just, I just want to see our district be on the crest of the wave, so to speak, in terms of student services. It is not something that is secondary to general education. It is general education. It's just. Is, it's a different aspect of general education and it, it, it's so important. So. And that's why Mrs. Sarwanka has been here very frequently. She will continue to do so. We will continue and invite discourse both publicly and privately on this. If I or any of the school committee members can ever be uh of a resource in any way or act as a resource in any way. You know, please reach out to us, to your concerns and, and I see there's one more question I'll get to, but. Um, I just wanted to, to, to say thank you so much to Mrs. Sarwanka for putting this together. And I know that it's a, I think people maybe works, expect. And I know that it's a, I think people maybe were expecting like more specific like data to be shared. We don't necessarily have that yet. This was sort of an overview of the student services department. And to sort of, sort of introduce that, those concepts to those that aren't as familiar and to start to have the discourse and the important conversation. So don't despair if you feel like there was supposed to be, there's more detail that you were looking for today. It's not the only time. This is just, this is just sort of the the beginning and 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 an announcement, a sort of like a formal invitation to everyone to to become more involved in this. So and I I just, I I know that Dr. Scollins and Dr. Sullivan and Mr. Wanaka were just, they were instrumental in making this happen. So I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that it's, they're completely unified on their, on their approach and in the recognition of the importance of of special education. So I will just get to the last couple of comments and then we'll move on unless there's anything else in the school committee after these. Mrs. Fraser follows up, but thank you, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins, Barbara, and a special thanks to the school committee for this platform. This is an important discussion. I look forward to seeing some changes discussed, implemented, particularly at the elementary school level. Thanks again. And then Ms. Sullivan, Abigail Sullivan, states, no need to read this aloud, but thank you. This is a big, I'm already reading aloud, so I'm sorry. I I I hope there's, there's, there's nothing that I shouldn't read, but I'm going to. This is a big, because it seems positive. If it seemed negative, maybe I would, I would heed this advice. No need to read this aloud, but thank you all. This is a big deal deal to a lot of people in the school committee and co-host of public school administrators times appreciated. Thank you for working to understand the concerns of the community and working to fine tune what happens in and co-host of public schools. I'm excited for everything that was outlined and the plans for improvement. Yes, Craig, let's be on the crest of the wave. Okay, so that's probably a nice way to end that student services discussion, but I don't want to monopolize the school committee's time. Anyone have any follow-up comments, questions, anything? Feel free. Okay, moving on. Thank you so much, Mrs. Serwanka.
Thank all of you very much.
Moving on to the school committee section, we're getting into some recommended policy revisions from our policy subcommittee. Mrs. Coleri and Mrs. Saint Ange.
Okay, so on the agenda, recommended policy revisions are first and non-discrimination clause is second. Okay, so we, as I'm sure everyone recalls, we've had a lot of conversation around policy EBCFA, which is commonly known as our mask policy. We have spoken at length with our council and as a policy subcommittee and would love to reframe this policy to not be a face covering policy, but as something that allows us to respond to a public health emergency or crisis. Initially, we had conversations around sort of an edited version of EBCFA. And our council took the time to review and make much more extensive edits to this that I think we agree and Dr. Scollins and Mrs. Saint Ange, please correct me if I'm wrong, sort of create a more a document with a little more longevity in in our policy manual. So you've received a redlined version of this in your packet. Well, it's a blue line version, I guess. I I don't want to go over every single part or edit. But what I will say for, like in summary, is that it essentially states that when there's a public health emergency, the CDC, DSE, the Mass Department of Public Health and local public health authorities will make recommendations and or mandates. And that this policy essentially says that if it's a mandate, we'll follow it. If it is a recommendation, then it gives us the authority to decide whether or not we'll implement it. And if any of that guidance is in conflict and there's a mandate, we'll follow DSE's mandate. Essentially, is is a very loosely boiled down, I don't know if that's even a thing. Is a, it's a simplified version of what's in here. So if anyone has any thoughts, comments, feedback, I don't know Chairman McClellan, if you want to put this on the next agenda as a vote and explicitly name the policy. Or if we, I mean, I guess maybe just entertaining discussion now would probably be the next best thing to do.
Yeah, so we can treat it as a first read, especially in light of the fact that I think there was some confusion, you know, between, you know, whether this would, you know, implement some sort of requirements in the fall. But I I feel like a first read would probably be good. You're sharing this with everyone. People can share their thoughts right now in this forum and then we can put it on as a vote and, you know, we can present a finalized format. Taking into consideration, the subcommittee can take into considerations the thoughts of the entire committee, produce a finalized version and then we can vote on that the next meeting. Or if you prefer, we can have a full discussion and if you think that we need to have a vote tonight, we can probably do that as well. But I I think a lot of times we do first reads on this. I'm open to what the policy subcommittee thinks is prudent.
So I, we have a policy subcommittee meeting scheduled for August 10th at 5:00 PM. That's also just a general notice to all those listening. Those meetings are on Zoom and they're open meetings. The agenda is posted, but I just, I think it would be beneficial if anyone has anything that they want to give us input on now. I think that would be helpful.
Chair McClellan, would you like me to share anything on the screen in terms of?
Yeah, if you, if you can, it was included in the packet, Dr.
Which time you want to share the blue line one?
The red line one, EBCFA.
This right here?
Yeah, blue, blue line, yeah.
Thank you.
And I feel I I can certainly toggle down to whatever you want to mention. Anything you?
Mr. Dial unmuted himself. Mr. Dial, do you?
Yeah, I was just, is this, is this the point at which I get to shine?
Sure.
So I think I'll I'll throw out there, I think this is a very sensible policy and a sensible approach to how we do this. The one, I don't know that this necessarily requires a revision, but the one thing that I wanted to stress is I don't want us to give up any powers as a committee. I agree that if we are subject to a mandate, we should follow the mandate. But if there are decision points in assessing that mandate, like an exception process or a waiver process, we should can be able to consider the interests of our district in 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 considering how we apply that. So I think that's probably implicit here because as a mandate, then the exception would be part of the mandate. But I just want to make sure that that's, that that's clear where, at least where I was coming from, that the, that we we should not give up any, any any power that the the school committee might need in addressing a public health emergency.
I I I agree with you. I think that 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 added paragraph that's completely right there to the bottom of the page now, which I have a a comment about. I I I feel like that's sort of, that that's where, I mean, otherwise it's not discretionary, right? Mr. Dial, it's like, it's if it's required, it's required. And we're saying we're going to follow the requirements of the state, which we're really obligated to do anyway. You know, can't be like a rogue school district. But but this is I saying is, this paragraph says to me, when it is discretionary, we have the discretion as to which, which right now, and this is what I, my comment relates to, it says in the the last sentence, well, it might even be all one sentence, frankly. It's in the, in the third to last line, it starts school committee. Over on the end of that, it says which guidance is to adopt. I I think I prefer which measures to employ. That's, that's what I would like to see as the language there.
And 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 Chairman McClellan, just I I agree with that. The point that I was trying to make is a little bit of nuance on, you know, if we are going to, you could have a mandate that says you are required to do X unless you file an exception. And I want to make sure that we just don't say, okay, there's a mandate and stop discussion, that the committee still has the authority to say, okay, well, there's the mandate. But we have an exception or waiver process that we could, we could pursue. So we absolutely should follow what's being told to us, but I don't want this to be a policy saying, okay, well, we can't consider anything else because this policy binds us. And I I don't think it's written like that and I don't think it it's intended like that, but I just want to make sure that that's, that that we were all on the same page. That that should something come up where there's conditions or processes that we're able to exercise the rights that we have as a, as a committee.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Courtney Ness from our town made a comment. And Ms. Ness, can you just, can you please, I don't know if you texted me this early. Can you just put in the Q and A your, your address so that I can read that with the record? I I don't know if I already have, if you commented earlier, I just can't remember. She states, the, thank you, 210 Lambert Lane. She says the word requirement is concerning versus recommendation. I I don't know, so follow up if I'm wrong. I I, there's two sort of sections of this. One is where they are requirements and one is where there would be recommendations. And if they're requirements, then they're requirements. If they're recommendations, then this document, this has changed, as we're discussing, would would give us discretion to address them. But maybe that's not what you're talking about.
Right, like currently, DSE is not mandating us to have masks in schools, right? They're leaving it up to school committees to decide whether they'll be mandating masks for any kids in their district, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
So that would be recommendation, right, versus requirement. If DSE were saying, we are requiring all districts to require these students or all students to wear masks, that would be a requirement. And so what this policy says is if DSE issued that requirement for all districts in Massachusetts to require that of all students, we would follow that requirement and not go against DSE's requirement. But it says that if DSE issues a recommendation, that we would then deliberate and decide where our school committee falls on whether or not we want to require masks.
Okay, I see. She, she, that's, that's right. So she follows him and says, exactly. So how is this committee deciding? I would include language on how you are making that decision as a committee. I I don't think that that would be, that would be too specific. I think it would try and contemplate too many variable situations. And so the the discretion is, it's, it's in our discretion and and you elect your school committee and you hope that they're going to make reasonable and informed decisions in the manner that we're, we're going to address the mask requirement next week at the special meeting. We're going to have, you know, mem, various members of, you know, town.
We didn't decide it's next week, did we?
Well, I I don't know a date, but I think we're trying to do it next week. It's I, you know, I haven't, there's no date. I I've made it clear that it's to be determined. We we don't know yet.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I didn't miss something.
No, you didn't miss anything. I I so, so it hasn't, it hasn't been set, but it's going to be in the near future and we'll let everyone know. I just haven't had a chance to get in just because there's, it's not just the school committee, it's Board of Health, there's the CTA. There are a number of different entities that I want there to share their perspectives and information or data as well as the community, as well as the school committee, so that we can make an informed decision. So Ms. Ness, that is how we would do it. And in in this particular case, that's how it's being done. But I mean, to outline that, I, for any given, you know, unknown situation with any sort of specific enumeration within a policy, I I don't think is is wise, because it may limit us in a manner that proves detrimental in some situations. So that's my position on that. I think that so, so Ms. Ness states that our, our local virus virology, I I don't know if I'm saying that correctly. It's the first time I've seen that term is very different from the state. I imagine it, she's, that that term relates to infection rates. Agreed. I always equate it to a snow day just because Pittsfield, Massachusetts is getting three feet of snow and Cohasset is getting not even a drop of rain. The whole state doesn't get a snow day, right? So that is something that you might take into consideration in making a decision like that. But again, I I think to outline that specifically, I I don't, I don't, I don't, it's not the only consideration. So I I my personal, this is just my personal position on this. There's five of us. And if you, if any of you think that we should include specific criteria in in terms of deciding, you know, making these decisions in terms of of recommended safety measures, please, please say it. I I I just don't think it would be wise to make the policy that specific, but that's just my personal belief.
Mayor McClellan, I I agree with you. And so I'll throw in my agreement. And I'll also say that there is guidance in this policy that says what we should do, which is that we will decide in our discretion which guidance is to adopt or which measures to take. I appreciate your, your change there. In consideration of the safety and well-being of all members of our school community and the community at large. So it does give us some guidepost by which we we measure our decision-making. And I think having it broad gives us the latitude to make the best decisions for the, for the school committee as we're, as we're expected to do as school committee members.
Thank you. And Mrs. Cunningham notes, there is still an application for a waiver process, even if mandated, as Mr. Dial noted. If we were required to follow DSE, that disregards the, that process.
I disagree.
If you don't mind, I'll, I'll, I'll take that one. And I think that was, that was the point I was making. The mandate would be itself qualified by the waiver process. And therefore, the mandate allows you to apply for, even if we say we're following the mandate, the mandate includes the ability for us to file a waiver. So therefore, by filing the waiver, we're still following the mandate. So the point is, we're not giving up any authorities, our, our, our powers that the school committee has to to work through a waiver process under this drafting of the policy.
I agree. All right, anyone else that has any, have any comments in this before we send it back to the subcommittee to create the final product and vote on it at the next meeting? I know there's another, is there, Mrs. Clear, there's another policy as well, right?
No, but there's a non-discrimination clause. It's the next item on the agenda.
That's what I'm thinking, yes. Okay, is there anything, anything further relative to the, to the this current policy?
I just, I just want to clarify that we would, just for like the community and our committee, that we will be voting on that at the next regular meeting.
Yes.
On August 18th.
Making that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on to the non-discrimination clause.
Okay, Dr. Sullivan, is it possible for you to share that too, please? Thank you. So this is an item that we actually reviewed in part at our last meeting and put off the vote on it to this meeting to ensure that it was explicitly on the agenda. So I would invite anyone on the committee that has any additional comments or questions to voice those now. Okay.
I did not.
Okay. So I I think Chairman McClellan, if nobody has any additional input on the non-discrimination clause, that we could maybe entertain a vote.
Sure, my, Madam Vice Chairperson, you seeking a motion to that effect?
Well, I wanted to know if you might be.
All right. Does anyone have a motion to approve the non-discrimination clause as presented by the policy subcommittee tonight?
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Clear, Mr. Kearney, excuse me. All in favor, Mrs. Mrs. Coleri?
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, motion unanimously carries. And that language is approved. And Mrs. Coleri, Miss Saint Ange, that, that, those are the only two items from the policy committee, right? Am I wrong?
Correct.
Correct.
All right, one second, just responding to a comment. All right, um, moving on to the school facilities committee. My personal favorite recurring agenda item, I have a great substantive update to share. The select board, you last night approved their three nominees. So that committee now has a quorum and we will be meeting this month. I don't know when. But I I guess, I guess I'm going to take the, the, the reins on getting that set. I'll get the committee members, we have six, so there's six of nine have been approved. That's a quorum. So we can start to meet. We can't, we, we can't lose any time. So that is awesome. Thank you, thank you. Thank you to the select board for for getting that done. And for, and for Chairwoman Carrie Thompson for getting that in front of the board and on the agenda for us. Thank you. More to come on that. I actually have the names of the, well, I don't have them handy, so we won't, we'll, we'll, we'll announce that next time.
I have them.
Oh, great. Mrs. Saint Ange, can you share those? It's myself and Mr. Kearney and and Kathleen Siglarski Burns, who were nominated by the school committee. If you recall, we were having a shortage of applications and we were trying to fill that committee. So two of the school committee members very generously volunteered for that. But then there were three others. Mrs. Saint Ange, who are they?
Yes, last night, the select board. Yes. Last night, the select board, um, appointed Alefia Harney, Jason Earls, and Marty Knee.
Great.
So those are the names I know, right? The three from last night? Yes.
Those are the six that we just named. So, uh, we're, we're, we're ready to go. It's great. And from my understanding that the town moderator, uh, will, will be, uh, hi, his nominations will be forthcoming in the near future. All right. Reports from any subcommittees? We can just, you guys can just speak up if you want, if you have a report.
I have a couple of things, just quick updates. As I said, our policy subcommittee is going to meet on the 10th at 5:00 PM. Safe, just to safe harbor updates, I want to remind everyone that the overdose vigil, overdose awareness vigil will be on Tuesday, August 31st from 6:45 to 8:00 on the Cohasset Common. And also Safe Harbor is focusing, um, along with surrounding towns, um, coalitions, including Citrus Facts, Marshfield Facts, and Hingham Cares on underage drinking. And, um, the fact that nobody should be buying alcohol for minors. Just a friendly reminder, there are definite consequences to doing that. There are also consequences to having a fake ID. And, um, there is information on Safe Harbor's website about the campaign that they're doing, but it'll include some press and some signage and liquor stores and such. So thank you to Safe Harbor for all the great work they continue to do. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Clear. Mr. Dial, any updates or announcements?
Uh, no, no announcements. We did have a, a financing facility subcommittee meeting on the 29th. It was a very short agenda, which is updated on facilities improvements. I'm pleased to report that, uh, despite the COVID pandemic, we were, we accomplished a lot by way of facilities improvements, including, I think, fixing your favorite door. So, uh, so we're poised well to move on to the, to the, uh, to the next year. We have a, a list of, uh, projects and wish lists that are moving forward. So, uh, we feel like we're doing a, a, a good job, uh, maintaining our schools. So, uh, I'll, I'll, we don't have a, another subcommittee meeting set up yet, but I'll make sure that, uh, I'll report it to this, uh, at this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney, any updates?
Well, same thing. I, um, thought that was a great committee meeting that we have with the finance facilities committee. We also, uh, agreed to do a walkthrough again. I think that's, uh, a really good opportunity for us to see some tangible things that need to be fixed, that we can fix, uh, right away. And also too, as I was, I was, I know we're talking about the, um, facilities committee that's coming up, and I'm grateful to serve on that committee. I just, um, wanted to reiterate that there's things that we talked about in our committee is to keep things rolling for, so that we can get things done right now and not in the, in the, in the past or the present. The present needs to be done. We have so many things to be done. We don't want to say, hey, we're going to do that, uh, next year. Uh, I think we, um, had a great meeting to let, I think we, we all, um, agreed that we're going to be proactive and, and everything to, to be fixed. So we're not going to be able to say, oh, well, we're just going to let that go for, and keep going and going. So it was great to, to hear that and it was quite great to be part of it. And I just wanted to thank everybody, uh, for being part of that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Um, Ms., Mrs. Saint Ange, that's where we're at. Mrs. Saint Ange.
I don't have any, um, subcommittee updates, but I have a question related to finance and facilities or a request, I guess. Just keeping in mind last year's, um, bathroom stall latch issue that took a long time to resolve. Is it, is there a list of like, um, before school starts this year, someone physically goes in and latches and unlatches every bathroom stall and make sure they're all working? Or like, I'd go in and do that, you know? I just feel like that's the kind of thing that needs to be ready to go day one. You know what I mean?
Yes. Well, actually, not to get to the real granular, but in our strategic plan, we did talk about processes that we would develop with our custodians and with other, um, personnel to ensure that, you know, we have a safe functioning school. And, and, you know, not that we don't do those things, but to do it to a, a, a larger degree. So I, I don't think that is, um, unreasonable at all. I think, you know, that's the type of thing that we want to make sure we have functioning facilities, functioning bathroom stalls, you know, appropriate, appropriate everything for our kids and our staff. So yes, that's, uh, totally reasonable.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Saint Ange. I have no updates. Uh, so we will move on to our, um, our next agenda item, which is the approval of minutes. We have one set, um, from my understanding, um, Madam Secretary, the December 16th minutes, is that the one? We have?
Yes.
Okay. So, uh, there were only, uh, this obviously predates, uh, Mr. Dial's tenure on this, uh, committee. And, uh, Mr. Kearney was not present, uh, at the meeting. So, uh, only Mrs. Saint Ange, Mrs. Coleri and myself would vote on this. I have reviewed it. I don't know if the, if, oh, obviously Mrs. Saint Ange has reviewed it. Mrs. Coleri, have you had a chance to review those minutes, December 16th, 2020?
Yes. Looks great. Thank you.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like anyone has. I didn't have any comments either. So is there a motion on the floor to approve the minutes as presented tonight for the December 16th, 2020, regular school, school committee meeting? Excuse me.
I'm moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Coleri. Is there a second?
Can I second my own minute?
You sure can, Mrs. Saint Ange, because you're the only other one that can.
Doing it. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Saint Ange. All in favor, Mrs. Coleri?
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange.
Hi.
And I, Craig McClellan, that motion carries by majority vote of three members. And the minutes are approved for the December 16th, 2020 school committee meeting. I do not have any topics that were, uh, were not reasonably anticipated within 48 hours of the meeting that I know of. And there is no reason that I know of to move into executive session tonight. So having gotten through the entire agenda, I would ask, having gotten through the entire agenda, I would ask for a motion to adjourn at this time at, at 8:57 PM.
So moved.
Moved.
Is made by Mrs. Saint Ange and seconded by Mrs. Coleri. All in favor, Mrs. Coleri?
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Hi.
Mr. Kearney.
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange.
Hi.
Hi, Craig McClellan, the motion unanimously carries and the meeting is adjourned at 8:57 PM. Thank you all so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mrs. Herwanka.
Oh, okay.
What?
I didn't know if Sue Owen was saying something or waving goodbye.
She was waving goodbye.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Very happily, very happily.
All right. So long. Farewell.
Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.